We know that there's a business that needs help coming into compliance. We have lots of resources to help. And we're very excited to be here. If you look at our website, it's zero waste bunker dot com. And you can sign up for that additional service from the city. You can get free signs. They're downloadable or you can come down to our office to pick some up and we have them all laminated and ready to go. At next, it was your first proposal, my little mother's birthday, that helped with this. The city and what's on your mind is never better than a visit from the best. In two thousand sixteen, our chemical industry, like many other industries, resulting in fifty nine cities and seventy towns, a number of cities and villages, twenty seven boroughs, more than thirty six counties, and other regions, and thousands of dollars, and right. The urban world just happens, and we're individuals. It are a people. It needs to happen with their own infrastructure, the same way. Inspired by hope, that a single traffic lane in town needs to be supported, the city of Bover joined the rates of meeting average speeds needed to cycle streets and adopted more efficiency road. Efficiency road programs across the United States, every of them is about traffic gaps in some regions, although preferable and unacceptable, and that all of us should be able to get around safely on our streets. There are all kinds of factors that contribute to safety, the roadway design, the speed, the cars, the vehicles, the energy, and all these. With the tour mission style, our city is encouraged to address all these factors in order to achieve the full function of zero traffic in a town in some regions. All of us have a feeling to create an entire mission path, but no more driving, lighting, or traffic, all of the two or three stations, we might run a speed super and have the mother. Together, we can make it out of streets, see one. Welcome back. The same ones we've very first met some of them hopefully come this year, but there's something that we can't help. A process of progress and success, and as well, if you want to be there, you can be there. This will see a lot of people, and it's a place to be, and it's a place to be. The city of Nice and I'm talking to you in relation about what the third was, and how it was, and what it was, or providing one couple of plans. In addition, there's other local businesses, and there's a lot of time to be in the public space. Presentation products, art, culture, transportation, finances, everything to other others, and estimated five years residence, and commitment, and powers. Some are still providing exit surveys for the public, but a great commitment is much more positive, but we know that right, major, and that the city. We're part of our own arena, and we're always going to have that on the block, and we're always going to be going back to that, and that's what we're doing. At best, we can job two. I love the picture, but the border is the can work and border at the same time, and we have a lot of neighbors, and uh, uh, similar areas, and lots of people working together, and working together. It's hard to understand, especially that the message is successful, and the first risk is to be that, and then, and then, and then. So just turn around, and I'll go, and we really want to make sure that we're reaching towards, versus to perhaps somebody else, so we're working on, trying to expand. That's very, the first thing that the state of the city, the graph that's based today, it's about going more useful, and they're allowed with a, an estimated quota.
President Donald Trump opened his new election with a claim made in a new book about his first year here at the White House. The publishers say they not kind and are releasing the book four days early. The US is cutting security aid to Pakistan accusing it of failing to deal with terrorist works operating in neighboring Afghanistan. And the French president insists on being able to dialogue with Iran following a week of deadly unrest. But the US also wants to see a greater proportion of terrorists influence the region. Corporate friends to afford this for journalists. First, the US were lawyers for President Donald Trump who donated a shoveling of a new book which features damaging allegations about his first year at the White House. Stu Bannon, chief strategist, has quoted as describing a nation's success as treasonous despite the level of flak that its publishers suddenly released on Friday. Three days earlier, but planned, yet totally say is unprecedented to know it. He hoped to deliver the presidency to Donald Trump, who knows that the blame was proven out of Caesar, but he might have made it. Trump's former ally and chief strategist has quoted extensively in a term of big, bad, aggressive administration. And the examples of foreign fire and flaming inside the Trump White House are published on papers as they are various news outlets. This twenty-four hours have complication. In the book, Bannon is quoted accusing Trumps of the sale of Virginia of treason committed when election day during the election gave place. The given news was a subject of the president's infamous agenda. Trump's acquaintance now threatening to exonerate his father by human guesswork in action. They say the related hidden disclosure agreement, but a year ago, the White House also hit back at Bannon. Furious, disgusted, would probably certainly feel when you make such outrageous claims and completely false claims against the president. His administration was from. I make this controversy comes of its criticism of Donald Trump's role, especially concerning North Korea. Relation to potential repercussions, so he did his intuitive diplomacy. When earlier the Guardian was Washington correspondent David Smith spoke with us about some of the books or explosive allegations.
Where Steve Bannon now seems to have crossed the line is attacking Donald Trump's family. He talks about Donald Trump's decision to hold a meeting with Russians during the election campaign as treasonous and unpatriotic. He's also very unflattering about Ivanka Trump, the daughter. What I think say she's as dumb as a brick and has gone down very badly, even Donald Trump, as you would expect. You know, he does not buy this of his family and he had the White House again today put out its news. So this is a trashy, tabloid nonsense. You know, they're, so as you say, trying to even take legal action against his book. He's going to Camp David at the weekend and talks about policy which shows takes a change with which we're probably all right and the public party. You know, the news cycle is so fast in the Trump universe that it's not impossible. A week from now, we'll be talking about something completely different.
The US says it's suspending security aid to Pakistan accusing it of failing to deal with terrorist networks including Taliban militants targeting American personnel in neighboring Afghanistan. President Trump has claimed that Islamabad has deceived the United States, others over billions of dollars of aid. A spokesperson for the district or district sending the cut until Pakistan took decisive action against militants. Today, we can confirm that we are suspending national security, excuse me, we are suspending security assistance. Security assistance only to Pakistan at this time. Until the Pakistani government takes decisive action against groups including the Afghan Taliban and the Haqqani network. We consider them to be destabilizing the region and also targeting US personnel. The United States will suspend back end of security assistance to Pakistan. Now, the money that has been suspended at this time does not mean that it will be suspended forever. Pakistan has the ability to get this money back, if you will, in the future, but they have to take decisive action. They have to take decisive steps. Al-Karim has condemned the conviction of a Turkish banker was accused of fraud and conspiracy as part of a scheme to help Iran evade US sanctions. The decision by a court in the book has entered the Turkish president. During the case was based on fact of future dividends, suicide says the story. A multi-billion dollar scheme to help Iran evade US sanctions is involved in one of Turkey's biggest banks. So the majority state owned hack bank executor from Ahmed Hakan Antina was accused of conspiring with Turkish Iranian gold trader Riza Sogad. The pair along with others are believed to have paid bribes to Turkish officials to help Iran escape sanctions using fraudulent gold and food transactions. The spring scheme was allegedly carried out with the blessing of Turkish President Erdogan, who dismissed the case in December as a politically motivated attack on its government. It is a plot against Turkey and was against the United States. It is an international counter-attack. The trial has further strained diplomatic relations between Ankara and Washington. But acting through a satanic regime, Kim said its outcome should serve as a warning to banks. Foreign banks and bankers have a choice. We can choose both the need to help Iran and other sanction nations evade US law. Or we can choose to be a part of the international banking community transacting in US dollars. Turkish government officials and foreign investors are now forcing themselves for peers of steps like US regulators. Which could include fines as high as several million dollars. Turkey and Russia have created supportive appearances in Iran following a week of boutique board photos there. Aqua and was hoping the US helped spark the demonstrations which have twisted market the dead. Who refer the rallies in support of the government on Thursday to the secret of taxes. Point of finger directly towards the US. On Thursday, Russia called on Washington to stop interfering in Iran's domestic affairs. This after Donald Trump tweeted in support of Iranian intake of group protesters. A strong warning echoed by Turkey as well. Richard Weaver, Mr. Gordon, what is your view of Iran's peace or strength continuing at Asalutus? I have to say that if some people attempt to close a store in Iran from outside, it will provoke a backlash. Once again, I would like to stress that we cannot accept any interference through outside statements or tweets. And it disrupts society's peace and tranquility. News demonstrations erupted over a week ago across Iran. At first, it protest a gimmick hardship, but it quickly turned into intake government rallies. Like that one of our families can't afford to buy goods, prices are too high and our income too low. What else I don't understand. Over the course of five days, at least twenty-one people were killed in clashes with the revolutionary guards and hundreds were arrested. Meanwhile, to respond to those demonstrations, tens of thousands of people were seen attending pilgrimage rallies. As soon as folks were taken back via brand. This past week has been the biggest test for this land for public since the last major protest movement in two thousand nine. The French president Emmanuel Macron has called for a agreement of understanding Iran is influencing the region. His speech to the French diplomatic corps said about to see the local parliament twice a year, finally and firmly accomplished. And he insisted on a long-term dialogue with Iran to end the current unrest. It appears that this crisis comes from the free expression of the Iranian people. It clearly shows that change does not come from the outside, but from within. Change will then come from the Iranian people. And our goal is to make a new account, every day, demanding vigilant observers of that process. We must make sure that we know what about rights and tractors and people to be careful of. Authorities in Congo say at least thirty-three people have died from flooding around the capital Keshaw. So five children are one of the victims, several are in the city, remain under torture or have their lives risked. After slamming Ireland or the UK's strong iron has begun to be able to batter over the area. At least five people have died, the latest victim of the war here with French rescue services. Since the region is in the U.S., as a nation, it is uncapable of fix. The rucksies slamming in shoreline Salomon on France's northern coast. At high tide on Thursday, towering waves broke over the panic areas and onto the streets. Listen to Luke on the water said all he could do is shutter the windows and wait. We've got a sort of a late in Canada, the shutters are closed in Bordeaux to prevent the weight of the water from pushing them open. This way toward my house is shaking, it feels like a rumble of thunder, it's unbelievable, it's impossible. Storm Eleanor has wreaked havoc across France, from the sea to the mountains to the Heli Island of Porcego. France's island of beauty burst into flames on Wednesday in rare winter wildfires fanned by Eleanor's powerful winds. Reaching up to two hundred kilometers per hour. Her face just pale of it was a hammock that was surrounded by fire before anyone could. I couldn't reach my son when he was in hammock, his clothes on fire, I didn't care about the truck, but it clearly looked like it was okay. Hundreds of firefighters managed to get the flames under control Thursday. Women homes had already been damaged or completely destroyed. Over ten thousand households lost electricity after power lines were damaged. Back in rainlands, several local libraries were closed, unrecognizable, and dozens of fallen trees. In the eastern豫豫region, fast moving mudslides have flooded homes and swept away cars, resulting in endless thunder. As where as many as family parts of the UN state are thrown down for the first time in three decades. A storm known as a bounce out of this coast traveled chaos in several states with thousands of flights canceled, several people have been killed. Although the word of God or cyclone is an unofficial term for meteorologists known as explosive cyclogenesis. This occurs when the central pressure of a low pressure system, so that it has an atmospheric depression, drops by twenty four milligrams in twenty four hours. It sounds like a literal pressure drop can actually go the wrong way. It allows the structure to pick up more air and strengthen rapidly, producing hurricane force winds and causing sudden falling temperatures. Winter months of white clothing and strong bracing which is currently moving northward on the eastern coast could be the most intense to hit the US in years. It comes as average temperatures across the country are already well below zero. Causing the Niagara Falls to freeze partially on Wednesday. Major north eastern cities such as Boston and New York may need more visits. Strong braces also causing major disruption to air traffic as well as power shortages. Egypt and Liverpool's favorite Mohamed Salah has been named African Super Player of the Year for twenty seven two. Twenty February, he attacked his country, reached the Africa Nations Cup final and qualified for the series Cup in Russia. The striker has scored twenty-three goals since over the top of the game in Lloris last summer. Our correspondent to the world press OPR is covering the story with us. No surprise that F B Muhammad Salah was a favorite to take a big coveted African footballer of the year. But as you just mentioned, it's not the third prize that he's been honored with in recent weeks. And this week, he won the African being Arab brother player of the year award as well as the BBC Africa, African player of the year of late last year. Of course, he's been a favorite to win this coveted prize this evening. He was the second highest scorer in the English Premier League last season and played a pivotal role in seeing Egypt as well. Campaign to the World Cup in Russia later this year. Now, of course, Egypt have won several of those this evening, taking team of the year and lead coach, taking the coach of the year as well. So all smiles over the front of Egypt, of course, the country really needs this boost for themselves. And speaking at a press conference just before the ceremony, Niamh Kasana actually telling us that he wants to be the best player in Egyptian history. And I think he's well on his way to getting there. That's a sign to see it.
Sunday nights with a magnetic draw of a kit to a rock concert, religious chants chanting and tears, frenetic preaching. In Rwanda, born again churches are thirsting at the seams. Evangelical churches, solemn temples, Pentecostal, all are gaining influence. There was gossip before the end, the churches came with power, a weary, irate host, a festering of the Holy Spirit. So that's why we are following the best of the most churches instead of us. Congregations are snowballing because the spiritual communication is exuberant and seductive.
The Buddhist church that doesn't feel the Lord's fruit. Which for us, we lay on the field. The Holy Spirit, the Holy Spirit can teach us.
But if it was borders like this, these churches arrived here in the wake of the genocide of the return of long exiled Tutsi refugees from neighboring countries. And the churches have benefited from a fall in the prestige of the Catholic Church. Damaged locally by its close relationship with the extremist Kuiper regime before and during the genocide. Administered by white priests before decolonization, Rwanda was one of the most Catholic churches on the continent. But between April and July nineteen ninety-four, numerous Catholic churches became massacre sites. Some priests even delivered their blocks into the hands of the killers. Chantal is a genocide survivor. She sometimes comes to meditate here by a martyred church now a memorial. In April nineteen ninety-four, when massacres began, she sought refuge in the church with other Tuxes, more than five thousand massacred. She was one of the few to escape. All the twenty years later, a resentment of the Catholic Church remains.
Remembering the historical genocide, I prayed in this conflict church. I was baptized here, I took my communion here. But after they helped with the massacres in this church without any pity, I decided that I would never come back to pray in a conflict church. Thank you. Yet I couldn't live without praying, so I became an Adventist, teaching the German faith.
But genocide survivors and former refugees represent only a minority of the populous population. Others have been attracted to born again churches and their ill because they play on emotion. And what do us, what motivates people in these churches? Is the Spartan lady of expression, the Spartan lady of prayers. It also has something to do with a sense of communion, heartwarming community. The Bible's one must get harder where harder is due. And I think it's fair to say that these churches are bringing along many positive things. They're challenging us, the Catholic Church in a positive way, but also other Protestant churches are important as the record. Today, Regina Pachis churches fold. Perfect here in Kigali celebrate the ordination of two new priests, proof that the church's appeal endures for some here. Priests avoid directly criticizing evangelical churches or worry about some trends. So just what is to be hoped that among all of our churches, including born agins, but also traditional Protestants and Catholics? That we all come closer together. We must maintain close contact to avoid situations where religion is distorted into something that is not among our religious, but rather opportunistic or partisan. Although all compulsory donations set at ten percent of born again churchgoers' income are particularly controversial. Many pastors who become rich with their churches functioning as profit making enterprises. But the authorities aren't worried. So for us, we look for the heavenly good life judge to serve us too. To join hands, battle the bigger choice, including decided to be carved with the line of the line of sangria of the world goes. As we realize that there was another tip, a flip kick, in the end, that could allow this to disappear. There are no official statistics for the growth of this phenomenon, but for better or worse, there's no denying that these churches are on the up.
Are you a NASA, are you a Twitter?
Coming next, the sports.
I'm Sarah Lawrence, my friend's Twitter's correspondent team with truth. I bring you the latest news in Spain and Portugal, two countries battling to leave behind years of austerity. Join me live and check out my reports on France twenty-four and France twenty-four dot com.
Sarah Lawrence, one of the hundred and sixty first ranked post mortem in the world. Next, I am pleased to announce, the camera was here with yes, the sport, had to say it on a week that. The bigger boat, it tells the country, starting with the word new, what we're going to add again, I like you, it tells you this. Mohamed Salah from Egypt and plays for a liberal program to Liverpool. This summer, he was named the Parthans Player of the Year and that makes it a hat trick of awards for Mohamed Salah. Because he had already won the Premier League African Footballer of the Year as well as the Arab Player of the Year Award. Let's turn now to Aqua in Ghana where the ceremony for those awards took place on Thursday. Liam the best for Pierre was there, was at this ceremony this evening and Liam. Mohamed Salah was recognized this evening with this award for Best Footballer of the Year. Both from his performances with his club and with his team.
Yes, definitely no surprise that F B Mohamed Salah was a favorite to take a big coveted African footballer of the year. And as you just mentioned, it's not the first prize that he's been honored with in a recent weeks. And this week, he won the African being Arab brother player of the year award as well as the BBC African player of the year of late last year. Of course, he's been a favorite to win this coveted prize this evening. He was the second highest scorer in the English Premier League last season and played a pivotal role in seeing Egypt as well. Campaign to the World Cup in Russia later this year. Now, of course, Egypt have won several of those this evening, taking the team of the year and lead coach, taking the coach of the year as well. So all smiles over the front from Egypt, of course, the country really needs this boost for themselves. And speaking at a press conference just before the ceremony, Niamh Kasana actually telling us that he wants to be the best player in Egyptian history. And I think he's well on his way to getting there.
Liam the best from Pierre reporting there for Aqua in Ghana for these awards. And you did mention some of the other awards that were given out tonight. We're gonna take a full look at all of these awards. You mentioned the coach of the year, that was Hector Akurpo, it's the Argentine coach of Egypt. He's been with Egypt since twenty fifteen and Egypt, of course, also winning the national team of the year. Now for the female football in the continent, female player of the year, as he said, Ashwara, she's from Nigeria, Nigeria. Won the female Africa Cup of Nations last year, the female national team of the year. South African club of the year, that's Rida Athletic Club, Rida Casabrunca as it's known in the football world, the Moroccan team. Won the African Champions League late last year. Now Mohamed Salah, he won the, on the pitch this Friday, brought his team Liverpool will be in action for the FA Cup third round match against local rivals. And Mark Owen's favorite team Everton. Now the Mets are running after a silver award, they've been waiting for it since the league cup title in twenty twelve. But manager Jürgen Klopp is adamant that he was taking the competition very seriously, looking for his first trophy with the Reds. While some big teams have been feeling insides in at the cup competitions, correct rumors to feel a competitive side to this. The lineup will be lineup, don't you? Shows, uh, who respect for the FA Cup. There are a few people that said that I don't respect competition and stuff like that enough. But that's not the truth, so maybe we have to maybe look for others. We want Tottenham were playing this evening and they were held to a goalless draw at home by West Ham, the Spurs. They were looking to cut the gap with fourth place Liverpool in the Premier League standings, but instead just barely avoided a defeat. West Ham were the first to score, that was in seventy eighth minute through Pedro Obiang, but Hukemi Song saved the day for Tottenham with a powerful strike. Late in the game, a two finished the game one all, that means that Tottenham are still fifth, three points behind Liverpool. Arsenal just behind them, but level of thirty eight points in sixth place. Switching places now, a wave of snow sees some skinny Arsenal hair shirt clinching his fiftieth World Cup win in his career. To become just the fourth man scared to reach that mark. He joins Italian great Alberto Tomba in third place in those rankings. He had an impressive second slalom on Inzaghi, Arshar finishing ahead of first running leader Michael Mat by just point four five seconds. And like Christopherson of Norway finished third in that slalom, now a whip is built slalom winner, fifth overall of the season. Arshar stretches his lead in the overall standings to ninety four points over second placed Christopherson. And we finish with this bad news for Ambien Murray in attendance, he has made it official, he will not be taking part in the upcoming Australian Open. Brad had already pulled out of the Brisbane International earlier this week after failing to recover from his long lasting hip injury. Murray has not played a competitive match since November last July. He did attempt a return at the US Open in the summer, but he withdrew just days before the start of that tournament. He has since dropped sixteen in the world rankings and after playing a couple of exhibition matches, he decided to fully focus. He has since dropped sixteen in the world rankings, and after playing a couple of exhibition matches, he decided to fully focus on getting fit again. And until now, he'd always refused to have surgery on that hip, but now he's mentioned it, he said that he's now seriously considering surgery. And he's been out of the courts for a while, so maybe that's a little bit.
Indeed, well, I was thinking, of course, I thought was that Catherine, thank you very much indeed for this process of opportunity, we can put a meeting on the web.
Thank you. Very visited, presented by Stuart Nover. In nineteen ninety six, conflict broke out in the Gulf. Powers tried to overthrow the monarchy to establish a peaceful republic. The rule of law dropped in, taking up arms in support of the cause. Thousands of people have died in the bloody civil war that lasted ten years until peace was broken in two thousand and six. Today, four child soldiers are speaking out. They talk about the armed struggle and the sad memories. Our borders went up itself like a mother. She went to fight at the age of twelve. To now, she wants to fight for votes by getting aboard the seven. We visited on France twenty four and France twenty four dot com. A lot of words as President Donald Trump threatens a new election, as he claims made a new book about his first year in the West. But as you say, they're not kind, and are releasing the book four days earlier. The U S is cutting security aid to Pakistan, accusing it of failing to deal with terrorist works operating in neighboring Afghanistan. And the French president insists on the need for dialogue with Iran, following a week of deadly unrest. But the U S remains to say it brings in terrorism terrorists influence in the region. Over at France twenty four, press for journalists. First, the U S wrote letters for President Donald Trump, demanding a shoving of a new book, which features Donald Trump allegations about his first year in the West. Stephen Truss from Chip Scott Just is quoted as describing a relationship with the Russians as treasonous. Despite the level of flat with expatriations, some believe he received on a Friday, four days earlier than planned, due to what they say is unprecedented demand. He hoped to deliver the presidency to Donald Trump, with the US government as ruling country Caesar, with the American leader. Trump's former American chief of strategy has discredited extensively the electronic power of the United States administration. There are examples of him fleeing inside the Trump headquarters, published online as though they were his own experts. This, according to others, has complications. In the book, Donald is quoted accusing Trumps of the same delusion of truth and information with a function of nature in the election campaign. The campaign goes with the subject of the president's infamous hiding. Trump's secretary is now threatening to explain to us why Barack Obama is threatening action, they say a violated internal disclosure agreement. At a earlier, the White House also hit back at Biden. Curious, disgusted, would probably certainly feel when you make such outrageous claims and completely false claims against the president. His administration was feared. The latest in Trump's comments amidst criticism of Donald Trump's world policy, especially concerning North Korea in relation to potential repercussions surrounding his Twitter diplomacy. When the guardian is Washington correspondent David Smith, speak with us about some of the books with excessive allegations.
Where Steve Adam Nussef across the line is attacking Donald Trump's family. He talks about Donald Trump and his decision to hold a meeting with Russians during the election campaign is treasonous and unfaithful. He's also very unflattering about Ivanka Trump, the daughter, what I think says she's as dumb as a brick. And that has gone down very badly even Donald Trump actually, well, actually would expect. He, you know, he does not like this, this family, and he had the White House again today without his ear. And so this is a trashy tabloid nonsense, you know, their room. And as you said, trying to, he can take leave action against this book. He's going off to Trump David at the weekend for talks about policy, which should make a change with Mitch McConnell and Paul Ryan and the Republican Party. And, you know, the new cycle is so fast in the Trump universe that it's not impossible. A week from now, we'll be talking about something completely different.
The U S says it's suspending security aid to Pakistan, accusing it of failing to deal with terrorist networks, including Taliban relatives talking in America for sale in Afghanistan. President Trump has claimed that Islamabad has deceived the United States over several billion of dollars of aid. A spokesperson for the State Department said, sending the account until Pakistan took decisive action against militants. Today, we can confirm that we are suspending national security, excuse me, we are suspending security assistance. Security assistance only to Pakistan at this time. Until the Pakistani government takes decisive action against groups, including the Afghan Taliban and the Haqqani network, we consider them to be destabilizing the region and also targeting U S personnel. The United States will suspend that kind of security assistance to Pakistan. Now, the money that has been suspended at this time does not mean that it will be suspended forever. Pakistan has the ability to get this money back, if you will, in the future, but they have to take decisive action, they have to take decisive steps. Ankara has condemned the conviction of a Turkish banker was accused of fraud and conspiracy as part of a scheme to help Iran evade U S sanctions. The decision by a portier of work has angered the Turkish president, claims the case was based on fabricated evidence. Sarah Sykes tells the story. A multi-billion dollar scheme to help Iran evade U S sanctions involving one of Turkey's biggest banks. Soon, the joint estate owned hack bank executive Mehmet Hakan Antina was accused of conspiring with Turkish Iranian gold trader Liza Sarab. The pair, along with others, are believed to have paid bribes to Turkish officials to help Iran escape sanctions using fortunes, gold, and food transactions. This former scheme was allegedly carried out with the blessing of Turkish President Erdogan, who dismissed the case in December as a politically motivated attack on its government. The donor, it is a court against Turkey, not against the United States. It is an international court activity.
It's a bit of a standardization.
The trial has further strained diplomatic relations between Ankara and Washington. But acting through its attorney, June King, said its outcome should serve as a warning to banks. Foreign banks and bankers have a choice. They can choose willingly to help Iran and other sanctioned nations evade U S law. Or they can choose to be a part of the international banking community, transacting in U S dollars. Turkish government officials and foreign investors are now bracing themselves for punitive steps by U S regulators, which could include fines as high as several billion dollars. Turkey and Russia have committed supportive approaches in Iran following a week of anti-governing protests there. Ankara and Moscow feared the U S helped spark the demonstrations, which left twenty nine people dead. There were further rallies in support of the government on Thursday, Julie Sicker, as the crisis. Putting a finger deliberately towards the U S. On Thursday, Hirscher called on Washington to stop interfering in what equals Iran's domestic affairs. This after Donald Trump tweeted in support of a leaning anti-government protesters. A strong warning echoed by Turkey as well.
I think we may next step out of ownership of Iran's peace and strength, and it has a look to us. I have to say that if some people attempt to pose a stir in Iran from outside, it will only provoke a backlash. Once again, I would like to stress that we cannot accept any interference through outside statements or tweets aimed at disrupting society's peace and tranquility. Any issues?
Most demonstrations erupted over a week ago across Iran, at first to protest economic hardship, but it quickly turned into an anti-government rally. Like everyone else, families can't afford to buy goods, prices are too high, and our income too low. What's on our list?
People ask when they keep an attention to signals when people are protesting in their own heartbeat, and there is no solutions here yet. I found a person who was shocked.
Over the course of five days, at least twenty nine people were killed in clashes with the Revolutionary Guards, and hundreds were arrested. In order to respond to those demonstrations, tens of thousands of people were seen attending coverage in rallies, asylum efforts were taken back by the U S. This past week has been the biggest test for the Islamic Republic since the last major protest movement in two thousand and nine. The U S French President Ousmane Goum has called for an agreement aversing violence and harassment of the region. In speech to the French diplomatic corps, it said that it wanted to see the American world rising up, fully and firmly implemented. And he assisted in a large for dialogue this term to add to the current unrest.
As it feels, this crisis comes from the free expression of the Iranian people. It clearly shows that change does not come from the outside, but from within. Change will only come from the Iranian people, and our goal is to make a good account, without the late, impolite, vigilant observers of our process. We must make sure that we know fundamental rights are true, and that we're good.
Authorities in Congo say at least fifty three people have died from flooding in the route to capital Keshan. So five children are among the victims, several have had other city really under voted, or have others been attacked. After smelling Ireland and the UK, Australia, and Europe has begun to move to batter more than ever. At least five people have died, the latest victim of our terrible fridge rescue services, since the region's leaves and the avalanche alert has uncovered other hits. The West sees slamming shoreline salmon on France's northern coast. At high tide on Thursday, towering waves broke over the Atlantic barriers and onto the streets. Residents who lived on the water said all they could do is shut the windows and wait.
We did this with very weak camera. The shutters are closed and barred off.
The shutters are closed and barred off. Do you understand? Thank you. You're welcome. 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 Thank you.
Okay, Happy New Year, everybody. We're gonna start our first business meeting of the new year, January 4th, 2018. Lynette, will you call the role?
Councilmember Brockett.
Here.
Carlisle.
Here.
Grano.
Jones.
Here.
Morzell.
Here.
Nagel.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Yates.
Young.
President.
We have a quorum.
Okay, there'll be a couple members short tonight for unavoidable reasons. Okay, we have a couple of announcements before we dive right in. Just a reminder, we're gonna have, we're gonna start with open comment here shortly. But before then, our information packet that we encourage folks out there to read if they're interested, and that's on the Open Space Master Plan Process Update. That's available on the website if you want to read that. We are also beginning our boards and commissions recruitment process, and we are accepting applications through February 16th. You can get the application online. Just want to encourage everybody to apply. It's a great way to get involved in the community and play a meaningful role and get to know more about how things are going. You just need to reside within the city of Boulder city limits and be at least 18 years of age. And, yeah, just go to the website and look up boards and commissions. Okay? And then we also need to amend the agenda one item. We are going to add 6B, Establishment of a Working Group for Analysis of and Recommendations to the City Council Concerning Changes to the City of Boulder Charter and Code Provisions Related to Campaign Finance and Election Rules. And so, we're gonna, we want to add that under 6B. So could I have a motion to that effect? Any discussion on that? All those in favor of amending the agenda? It's unanimous, I think, Lisa, right? Okay. And with that, we're gonna go to open comment. Just a reminder, those of you who already signed up, you're free to speak to us to any item except for the two matters that we're having a public hearing tonight on, and those matters are landmarking of a bunch of properties on Pine and Spruce Street, and then also an ordinance change to allow for a day shelter and overnight shelter to be put into use at 2691 30th Street. That's the Bridge House project. So other than those, you're free to speak to anything, any matter to us at open comment, and if you would start with your name and address, that would be great. And with that, we'll start with Michaela.
Great. All right, Happy New Year. I'll start with that. I hope everybody's having a good year. I am going to be speaking on the incident that happened on December 25th where a member of our community was found dead on Christmas. I'm gonna start off by just sharing a story. On the eve of December 24th, I was in my home celebrating Christmas Eve with my family. And I think, you know, this story was, you know, shocking to a lot of people because it happened on Christmas, but I think that this is not an uncommon occurrence in our community, which is unfortunate. And so I'm gonna keep it short and sweet and to the point, but I think that some of the main reasons that this tragedy happened was that, you know, we need really consistent services for our homeless community regardless of whether it's 20 degrees outside or 40 degrees outside. This is a matter of life and death. I think if, you know, people are getting kicked out of the Boulder Shelter for the homeless and other services, there has to be some kind of appeals process with a neutral decision-maker and an advocate to assist that person, and making sure that all the processes are fair and right. And, yeah, I'll leave it at that as a few main points, and thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Patrick Murphy? And after Patrick, James Do.
My name is Patrick Murphy. I live in Boulder. The Muni has divided Boulder for six years and will continue the divisiveness for five more years. We all have the same goal but are stuck on the slowest and most costly path that provides nothing but inflated promises with no price tags, continued deceit about the true cost, and more costly litigation and wasted time. A wasted decade will continue the corruption of Boulder's honesty and integrity. For example, the true cost of the Muni to date is $27 million, not $14 million. In two years, that will rise to $36 million. Statements to the contrary are deceitful and insulting to all of us. If we had chosen to collaborate instead of litigate, in two years, we could have had $10.8 million of undergrounding and 6,292 homes with solar stimulated by a $4,000 incentive or over $12,000 homes with a $2,000 incentive. By using renewable energy certificates, we might all be 100% renewable today. These alternatives would achieve all of our goals contrary to the propaganda that claims things such as microgrids are illegal. Hospitals and destoso apartments on baseline have backup generators, thus making them microgrids. Excel is teaming with Panasonic and others, creating a microgrid in Denver. All we need is collaboration to replace vanity and egoism, then real carbon reduction can begin. One example of vanity and egoism in Boulder's is Boulder's rejection of Excel's offer to convert all our streetlights to LEDs. The reason Boulder rejected LEDs is, I'll just leave that to Lisa and maybe Sam, to explain to you and the rest of Boulder. Let's see if that heals the deep division caused by Boulder's unicorn desire to be an unregulated corporate monopoly.
Thank you, Patrick. James? And then Darren O'Connor?
Good evening, Council. My name is James Duncan. That's Duncan up there. And I'm not quite sure why the online messed that up, but today's my birthday.
Oh, Happy Birthday.
Yeah. And so, for each of you guys, I made a little tiny home or a little tent.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'd like to bring this up to you guys to take one.
Give that to the click.
There you go. They're pretty easy to make, as I imagine tiny homes and tents are, so it's not that hard. And so I wanted to do something a little more fun, and it's a little bit silly, but I've got a version of the Happy Birthday song that I'd like to sing for you. All right? Homes and shelter for you, homes and shelter for me, homes and shelter for everyone, homes and shelter for all. So, thank you, James.
Thank you, James. I have to ask you all not to clap. Do this if you want, we just want to make it so everybody feels comfortable. Okay.
All right. Mr.? Hi, everyone. Darren O'Connor, 2800 Calmia Avenue. I'm here sadly because we did lose somebody over Christmas, as you've heard. Mr. Harvey died. It's been a hard holiday for me. I lost lots of, I lost family, I lost friends, pets. It's been difficult, and there's a family in Texas who lost their son, their cousin, and he died on our streets needlessly. Someone else spoke to it. It's really confusing for people on the streets. They don't carry one of these things that tells them where everything's going on. I had a lady who was kicked out of the shelter for two weeks. She's disabled almost 70, and she was calling me saying, you know, "Where is the shelter tonight?" And I said, "Well, there is none tonight. It's closed. It's 21 degrees tonight, so there's no shelter." We have to end that. I think that the amount of money that we save by keeping the emergency, the severe weather shelter, closed leads to confusion, it leads to death. We just, it's unconscionable to save whatever we're saving. The churches, the synagogues are already saving their space every night, reserving it for these things in case it is open, so let's do it. And people are being kicked out of the shelter. There's no appeals process. I just watched through your September 19th show on TV, on the Channel 8 thing the other day, and there was a guy up here, Burke Deaton, sharing that he's been kicked out eight times in a year for minor things, and he just needs an appeals process. And the last thing is, you know, I'll just share for new members and for old who may not remember, that ordinance 617 says you must shelter your pet, and 5610 says you can't shelter yourself. So people on the street could theoretically be ticketed for not caring for their pet but wearing a blanket themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren. Evan?
Evan Rabitz, Downtown. Recently departed Councilman Matt Applebaum and Andrew Shoemaker, after returning from the city of Boulder's junket to Oregon to see homelessness solutions, including a resident-run campground, both went on KGNU radio and said that Boulder's product for homelessness was better. Now we know that the ever-changing product is lethal. Benji Harvey freezes to death on Christmas, banned from the Boulder Shelter by a petty dictator. No due process. The council turnover is a big opportunity for you to stop Boulder's half-century of war on the homeless with its many deaths, frostbite, and amputations. The city gives lip service to the known success of housing first, but only provides a few dozen units while prohibiting anyone from housing themselves with tiny homes or tents. Boulderites know the legal system is the worst way to deal with drug problems. Then why does Boulder legally persecute the homeless more than the rest of Colorado put together, according to DU Law School's The High Cost of Criminalizing Homelessness report? The man, the reason is the man behind the curtain, which is the Downtown Boulder Partnership. I met with a board member, and he proudly said Downtown Boulder runs the city. Downtown Boulder is an organization which gave us three councilmen, all of whom disgraced themselves: Richard Polk, George Karakian, and former Mayor Bob Greenley, who goes on trial for vehicular homicide on the 29th. When you're a tool of others, you're a tool of evil. It should be easy for the new two-thirds Women Council to end this expensive, fruitless, destructive, and lethal policy towards the homeless. The city's diabolical policy of only opening emergency warming shelters when it's below 20 is like George Bush's enhanced interrogation torture team.
Thanks, Evan. Kevin? Oh, I think we have, Kevin Beck and then Mike Comner.
I'm Kevin Beck. I live in Park East. I was a friend of Mr. Harvey also, and his death is the immediate reason why I'm here speaking, but it's not something I want to belabor. Boulder is a city that, of course, prides itself on the fitness, educational attainment, and happiness of its citizens, and although I'm not originally from here, I could be considered something of a Boulder cliche. I'm a marathon runner. I went to an Ivy League grad school, political liberal, and I would possibly be, probably be living on the streets myself right now if I had not stopped drinking in 2016 and taken advantage of some of the resources the city has given me and the state. From a strictly academic point of view, and I don't say this to be contentious, if you look at the last couple of years, the last several years of the way that Boulder's tried to address the homeless problem, it is just very fragmented. Whole organizations seem to come and go, exit Boho, enter Path to Home. This was going to be apparently the first winter in which people could stay at the shelter all day if they chose to, but that fell through. Last year, there was a policy, in order to get a bed, people had to register online. And we were talking about a population of people that largely doesn't have internet access and, you know, other factors like that. Homeless people can be annoying and criminal and inconvenient, and we all know that. My neighbors over on Mohawk, I know two of them had had bicycles stolen just this year, probably by homeless people, and they do just keep coming. We have to learn to live with each other. We have to learn to live with runners and cyclists who get in the way of our cars. We have to learn to live with Donald Trump supporters, wherever they might be, probably not here. It looks like a lot of well-intentioned people in Boulder who are taking a lot of half-measures and sort of hoping this is a problem that's gonna go away. And I don't have any of the answers. I don't really know the mechanics of dealing with this. I, that was a quick two minutes. I just wanted to say, I just hope the city can coalesce around something other than what's happening now. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Mike?
How's everybody doing? My name's Mike Comner. I'm a North Boulder resident. I have put up what the CDC hypothermia guidelines are, pulled directly from their website. I want you to really go into the darker area where it says the hypothermia is most likely at the very cold temperatures. It can occur, though, even at cool temperatures above 40 degrees. When I was a board member of Boho, this is what I looked at, and I brought to Boho's discussion about our temperatures, when we would open and when we would close. And we had a back-and-forth, and also having a lived experience of being homeless before, I found that those who sit around and make decisions sometimes don't know the reality on the ground. And so, I affected some change. We did 38 and wet and 32 and dry. When I was in the working group this year, you know, my concern was about people dying. And now we've seen our first death, not of the new year but of last year. And I think we need to take a step back and look at what we're doing, at what temperature we're doing it. I think we have the power to make this work. I think, instead of using the words best practice, look to what has been actually put in from the CDC, from NOAA, from Mayo Clinic, things like that. Just because another city does it one way doesn't mean it's the right way. And I implore you to turn around and think about those numbers. Benjamin Harvey didn't have a best practice day because of the shelter not being open. That's another thing we need to work on, is making sure that the shelter stays open.
Could you repeat, when you were on Boho's board, what were the temperatures, wet and dry?
They were 32 and dry and 38 and wet, or precipitation.
Okay.
And we would call it first thing in the morning, and it was based on NOAA Downtown.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Leo?
I'm Leo. I'm homeless, Boulder. And there are several things, like everyone else has been saying, some of my topics had to do with the people that died. There's no excuse for Boulder to let people die. I went to California for about six months, and in California, yes, they have some ordinances, but they're working with the Federal Department of Human and Urban Development, and the Human and Urban Development federally is actually paying subsidies to make sure people have a place to be. There's no reason for anyone to die because of these temperatures. I was turned away from the R Center and this program, told I've been homeless too long. There's no excuse. I've had to deal with these colds. If it wasn't for my dear friend who was sick tonight, who was gonna be speaking next, I would be dead. Animals have more rights than we do. We're their caretakers as far as what Boulder says, but yet, we can't let them die, but we can die? We need to find somewhere that the homeless can be and have a place, they can consider their home all the time. Because if anybody else dies, it's on Boulder, and I'm sorry to say, but, you know, this can't go on. There's food that these businesses throw away. FFA won't take certain things like sugar products, oh, because Boulder has that sugar test, we don't want to do that. But a homeless person out there, it doesn't matter what it is. Food is food, and we should not be wasting anything. Say we have zero waste, throwing food away as a business when somebody who doesn't have it could eat should not be done. Some things, the homeless need a Bill of Rights drawn up by Boulder that can later be passed on down through Colorado. Good examples are what California has been trying to do. There are examples of it. And I beg Boulder, please, we are people just like you. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. Robert Hollingsworth. Is Robert here? Okay, Maria Krenz?
Yes.
Oh. Okay.
Maria Krenz, 1919 Grove Street, Boulder. I have spoken to the council about the homeless issue a few times, and I'm sorry that I am compelled to speak again. This does not come easily to me, but I have two things that I must ask you in the name of common sense and compassion in order to reduce or eliminate the death of our homeless First, the council agreed before that the emergency shelter should be open if the night forecast is 20 degrees or below. The NOAA standard that determined 20 degrees for severe weather was not made for the situation that our homeless citizens are experiencing. Please change it back to the Boho standard and keep the emergency shelter open if the prediction is for 32 degrees and dry or 38 if it's rainy or snowy. And open the emergency shelter under this temperature criteria at locations well-known in the community every day of the week. Second, I don't know what your authority is regarding the rules of the Boulder Shelter for the homeless, but please look into them. Under the revised contract with the city, which the shelter may not have signed yet, their responsibility is to shelter the chronically homeless, not to teach them discipline and expose them to find their way in a 10-degree night. Thank you for listening and considering this seriously.
Thank you, Maria. Kathleen?
Councilmembers, thank you for hearing me tonight. It's very hard to follow everyone who's spoken about this homeless issue. I'm very moved by it, and I, what I need, what I would like to speak about is ADUs, which is another form of housing that I believe we need in this city. I think the homeless issue across the country is related to the lack of housing, the lack of affordable housing. And I would like to, I sent council an email letter a couple days ago, so I won't belabor the points now, except to say that if we had more ADUs in Boulder, we could house people who need a small place to live at a moderate rate. We have a young teacher living in the ADU that we built. We just finished construction in October. And we, we're going out a couple years, two or three years, we financed it ourselves. ADUs are on the backs of the homeowners who are building them. There's very little expense to the city involved. We pay permit fees. We are providing housing for folks to live. We have a young BVSD teacher living there, and she's very quiet, respectful. She's an asset to our community. And she said very clearly that she could not find another place to live. She was very grateful for the opportunity to live in a nice neighborhood near her daughter's school. She and her husband were separating. And so we felt like this was a great opportunity for someone, to keep someone like her in Boulder. There's many other advantages for ADUs, and I would encourage you to listen to the other folks who come forward in favor. I attended the December 11th meeting, and it was overwhelmingly in favor of ADUs. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathleen. Russell Hendrickson? Hendrickson? And then Jill Story?
Hi. Russell Hendrickson, 645 Concord. I was in receipt of an email from Jim Robertson on December 18th. I think council was copied. And in it, he said, quote, "Staff is processing the correction of a mapping error concurrently with the site review, use review, and rezoning applications for 311 Mapleton. All these actions will require public hearings before the planning board and city council, thus there will be ample opportunity for members of the public comment prior to and during each of these meetings, hearings. Thus, it is not accurate to suggest that the mapping correction is being processed without public review and comment. The process that's currently underway will be completed on January 9th. The planning board and council hearing on this issue may not be months in the future. Correction of an error is intended to just go through easily, and it's being processed as a correction of an error. Normally, a correction shouldn't come before council. It doesn't warrant going before council. I think this is an abuse of staff's use of the terms in the comp plan to accomplish this change. The comp plan requires that council approve an issue if it's called up by the county commissioners, and this is not going to be called up, my understanding, before the county commissioners. So council approval's not required, as it normally shouldn't be for just a mere correction of an error. If I were a lone voice on this, maybe I should just be dismissed and the error should be processed. But there are many, many very honorable, involved, committed citizens in our community that have given voice to this issue, and they've been turned away at every chance, at every time they've spoken, every time they've come before boards. The Open Space Board of Trustees was told they should not be involved in this matter by staff. So I thank you for listening and allowing us to have our voices heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Russell. Jill Story?
Hi, my very first city and council meeting ever, whatever. Fairly new resident to Boulder, 71 Ridge Drive. My husband works for Google, and I'm very proud of the fact that Google is all about giving to the affordable housing, that you give to the Boulder Shelter and the food bank. And one of the things that I brag about to the people, when I saw the homeless shelter in Boulder, I was like, yeah, Boulder takes care of its homeless. And then I found out the hard way that we really don't. And I started doing some research on it, and I went to Benji's vigil on New Year's Eve, and that was very disheartening. And I decided on that day that that was going to be my New Year's resolution, is to start standing up for the homeless in my new town that I loved so much. So I've got some paperwork here, there are studies, one's called "Too High a Price", and it talks about the criminalization of homelessness, and how we ticket our homeless for daring to have a blanket at night when they're sleeping. You are allowed to sleep outside 365 days a year, as long as you don't have a blanket or a sleeping bag on you, which seems really outrageous to me. I'm just going to mention the conclusion of this one thing. Homeless individuals without a place to rest are being criminalized for a basic human need, sleep. Clearly, there are not enough beds to assist Boulder's homeless population. Boulder simply cannot sufficiently address the needs of its homeless residents. Meanwhile, zealous enforcement of a camping ban criminalizes homeless people with no legal place to sleep. Because the one homeless shelter in Boulder cannot meet the needs of its homeless population, homeless people are denied shelter every day. Meanwhile, homeless people must do the best they can to survive in public and private places. In Boulder, homeless people must risk a criminal record for life-sustaining activities like These are basics, and this is a more in-depth, no right to rest criminalization in Colorado.
Thank you, Jill. Lynn.
Just coming to that subject on my text, Lynn Siegel, 538 Dewey. Yes, it seems that I have just been the subject of having a hot water heater applied to the outside of my building, an on-demand hot water heater. And I'm really concerned now, just now, the contractor texted me that he feels that, since this hot water heater is 95% efficient, and my tank hot water heater was 85% efficient, and Sam would know probably how to figure that. To me, it seems intuitive that you wouldn't want to put a hot water heater, you know, I'm warming up all of Boulder for the homeless, seems like. It's warmer today, kind of, you know. I'm not turning on my heat on at all. I've had it on, I had three days of people staying at my place on Airbnb, since the rule is short-term only, or long-term only. And so, nobody's at my 2,000-square-foot house, and I'm freezing in there at 40 degrees, until the guests came, and luckily, I could warm the house up, you know, for those three days. And then now, it's 54 again today, so it's down a bit. But I can't, you know, justify turning on my heat for one person in my house, you know. 17, it worked really good, I had almost no, that was my maximum, Tom, maximum of 17 people at my house at one time, against all rules, and no complaints in six years. So my issue is, you know, like now, what should we do about this hot water heater situation? Because when I, I spent five hours on the phone with them, with technical and with PR, and there's nothing they can do but put a disclaimer on. And people could be putting these things on all over Boulder. Now, my contractor did not inform me of a solenoid that will trigger the thing to turn off, and the water will drain, so that you save the hot water heater when it gets to negative four or below, which it can easily with a wind chill at 20 degrees. So what do we do with the permitting department to get this problem solved? I don't want people putting these hot water heaters on, blowing them up, and using all this energy to heat the hot water outside the place. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so with that, we're going to end open comment. I want to turn to staff, do you have any comment?
Well, first of all, Happy New Year. One of the gentlemen that spoke today, Mr. Hendrickson, was talking about the 311 Mapleton, and it was my understanding that it might be brought up under matters from the mayor and members of council. Jim Robertson is here tonight, and can provide more accurate information about the January 9th date, which is actually not a deadline. So if you want Jim to come up now, he can do it, or he can come up later.
Go ahead and do it now. And Jim, if you don't mind, starting with just a little bit of contextual background for everybody listening, that would be good.
Yes, and I have copies here of, we were able to, sorry, Jim Robertson, Director, Planning, Housing, and Sustainability, apologies. I have copies of a here, here of a post we made to Hotline, but it went onto Hotline only shortly before the meeting, but I can. A little bit of background, of course, generally contextually, we have two matters that we as a department are processing concurrently, although they are, in some ways, qualitatively different. One, of course, is development review associated with the proposed project at 311 Mapleton. That is ultimately, what's being done there is a site review, a use review, and a rezoning request. The latest submittal from the applicant came in, in early December, and I think it's undergoing review right now. The second item is with regard to a mapping issue in conjunction with a portion of that site. A portion of that site is currently mapped as Open Space Other. As a result of the application for the project coming in, it came to the attention of our staff, that it appeared actually that that Open Space Other designation was the result of a sort of historic error that had been made a number of years ago. As a result of that, we are processing, per the rules of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan, a map correction for that. Both of these items ultimately will come to both the planning board and to city council, and both of these are items that will be decided by planning board and city council. The January 9th deadline, or that was, the reference to that, that was mentioned on Hotline, that, the only significance of that date is that is the 30th day after we sent a letter to Boulder County pursuant to the rules of BVCP regarding the mapping, the correction of the mapping error. Boulder County, pursuant to the rules, has 30 days to provide a response to that. We received a preliminary response from Boulder County right at the end of 2017, and just this afternoon, received what they characterized as a supplement to that response. In the Hotline item that I, response, or post that I made this afternoon, I provided this information, as well as a copy of our December 11th referral to Boulder County, and their response to us, including the supplement that we just received this afternoon. Both of these were handling these concurrently, even though they are functionally separate items. Both of these ultimately will be scheduled for consideration by planning board and city council in the coming months. That, I think, provides you a brief, sort of, where we've been and where we're headed. I'm happy to try to answer other questions as well.
Thank you, Jim. So I just want to be crystal, crystal clear, a change of this nature is a legislative matter, is that correct?
The mapping, the correction of a mapping error is a legislative action, and Tom may wish to weigh in to clarify that or provide further.
Actually, I think David Gears here, he's probably.
Yes.
Okay.
And of course, the council, just to answer the question that you haven't asked, but then, the council's, any decision and deliberation that the council makes regarding the development review of the 311 Mapleton project is a quasi-judicial function of council.
Sure, but it seems like these things should be kind of separate issues of concern. If there is or is not a mapping error on OSO, and whether something will be built, those are separate. And the reason I raise it that way is, I would want to know, in making a decision about OSO, what the Open Space Board of Trustees thought. And so can you talk about what their role would be in this?
The Open, you have, I think, in the packet, well, no, actually, this may not be part of what I gave you. No, I believe it is, actually, but I, in the interest of saving some trees, I'll confess that the December 11th letter that we sent to Boulder County, I gave you a copy of that. It had a number of attachments to it, including the records associated with the Open Space Board of Trustees taking a look at the mapping issue. That's in your, you can access via Hotline, but in the interest of not using up too much paper, it's about a 22-page set of attachments to our letter to the county on December 11th. And that, that's a record of the Open Space Board of Trustees' consideration of the mapping issue.
And we have that?
Yes, it's not in, as I said, it's not, you don't have a hard copy, but it, but it is part of the record of what we posted on Hotline.
So we understand. What has the Open Space Board of Trustees been able to say or not say, like, for instance, can they say, "We feel differently about this being a mapping area"? Or can they say, "We are actually interested in acquiring part or all of that piece of land"? I mean, I'm curious about what we will have as far as information about what our experts think about the quality of this land and its use.
Your question would take me into an area that I'm less familiar with, in terms of either the record that has been created, or will be created, of the Open Space Board of Trustees, so I'm a little reluctant. I don't know whether any of other staff here may do that, but I can sort of follow.
What I'm looking at on the Hotline was the Open Space Mountain Park staff recommendation to OSBT on July 11th of 2017. Their recommendation is that they thought it was a mapping error. What I'm not seeing is whatever decision OSBT in fact made. So I don't know if that's in the packet or not, but I just quickly took a look there.
Yeah, and I, and I'm perfectly happy to follow up ASAP on, to get you that information. And if, and depending on what's there, also, information as to what would be the role of OSBT with regard to this.
So I had heard directly from one member of the board, who told me that staff had said that because it was a clerical error, that it was not something that OSBT would end up taking an official position on. So if you wouldn't mind following up and verifying what.
Will do.
Thank you.
Happy to.
So again, I don't know that this is per se allowed, but with the information that we've just received, I'm curious if Russell, who came and spoke to us, if this makes sense to their group, and if they have any further questions, this is something we can talk to them now about, or is it something they're going to now have to start emailing, and we'll just have to go back and forth on emails with?
It's generally not good to have back and forth, but maybe you can check in with him.
Absolutely.
Outside here, and Russell can let us know if that is sufficient to answer any questions.
Right.
But obviously, we want to hear a follow-up on this matter as well.
And I would just second that quite clearly. It seems that one of the issues has been that this group that has been concerned about it, about the 311 Mapleton process, has not been able to get any straight answers. And so, in that sense, I'm still unclear why it went to the county at this. Was this notification to the county, that this was going forward, and they would just have something to say about it?
The Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan actually provides some fairly, fairly specific direction on how to handle a situation like this. So the December, our December 11th letter to the county was per the procedures there of providing them the opportunity to provide comment on the mapping issue.
Does that make sense?
No, but.
Well, we'll keep going.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Mary?
So, Jim, in, I forget what the date of this letter is, but we received an email from Alan Delamere. It was December 28th, dated December 28th, and they outline about, I don't know, eight or 10 items. And one of them, there's like eight line items that they outline, and one of them says that in a staff report, May 5th, Open Space staff stated that there was no mapping error. And then there was a mapping error. In your clarifications, could you?
Yes, in response to the clarifications that Councilmember Weaver has requested, we'll, we'll address that issue as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, just getting a little deeper into your email that you sent us, the 20-page with the attachment, it seems like there was a meeting agenda for the Open Space Board, at which, on July 12th, at which Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan land use designation correction for 311 Mapleton Avenue was listed, so you can look at that.
Yes.
I guess what probably some of us are feeling is, you know, was the cart put before the horse? Because so much momentum comes from these development proposals, that, you know, they have so much at stake, the developers do, because we haven't decided this yet, and because there's a lot of planning and pro formas, and all the development review preparation that goes into it, it sure seems like this should have come forward perhaps, and this is not your fault, you weren't here at the time, but should have come forward as a separate issue earlier, so that we could look at that, and then the developer would know what they were going to be allowed to develop or not. So anyway, that's just a comment. These OSO situations turn into this complex thing, because it's aspirational open space that we'd like to get, it's owned by someone else, and, you know, one key thing will be, what does the Board of Trustees think? I mean, if they don't believe this is useful in their system, that's important for us to know, as part of that legislative decision. I'm kind of done.
And I can't find, is December 11th, so if you could, Hotline, if you could resend it?
It's an attachment to the Hotline that you received at 5:31 PM tonight.
Oh, today.
I believe I had two attachments, one of which was our December 11th letter to Boulder County, and the second of which was the responses we were.
I just haven't had a chance to get.
I understand, that's.
It's here, done. Thank you. And it's in this thing. Okay, and so you're going to follow up with us, and whatever you're going to give us, you'll make public as well?
You bet.
And Russell?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, a bunch of people also spoke to another issue regarding our homeless policies. Did staff want to speak to that? Or, I'm sure some of us do.
I'm not quite sure how staff can respond to it, since it's related to the Boulder Shelter for the Homeless and their policies. And I don't know if Karen, Karen, are you in the audience?
Well, there's a, maybe an update on their plan, the process we're going to?
So the update on their management plan is that they approved a draft form of it, and submitted it to the city about two or three weeks ago. It did not conform to one of the requirements that council had talked with me about on December 5th, and so we're continuing to work with them to make it more conforming. And Karen is working on that right now, and here she is, to talk about what we know with regard to the tragic event of a week ago.
Yeah, why don't you speak to us, and I know Mary has a question, and I'm sure others will as well.
May I have one?
Okay.
Sure, Karen Ron, Human Services. So what we do know, what has been shared with us, barring any confidential information related to Mr. Harvey, is that he was banned from the Boulder Shelter for the Homeless last March, and to their knowledge, he has not been back to the shelter since that time. He was banned for. He was banned for behavioral issues, an incident that happened in March.
So my understanding with Mr. Harvey was that he was coming to pick up his mail or something on Christmas Eve, and he was like one minute late to pick that up? Can you discuss—
So this—the information that I have is from the Boulder Shelter staff that Mr. Harvey was banned for violating the shelter policies last March. And to their knowledge, he has not been back to the shelter since.
Hmm.
If someone is banned from the shelter, then someone can come pick up their mail for them. But to the staff—to Shelter staff's knowledge, he has not been back to the shelter since. He did have mail at the shelter. He did have one letter that was still sitting at the shelter for him.
Mary.
Karen, I just wanted to be clear about the program beds.
Yeah.
Does that policy not go into place until the new management plan has been approved?
No, there are people at the—the shelter now because the current shelter management plan is in a—is in effect until May 1st. It would be May 1st when the year-round all-day program beds then would not be available because it would be in violation of the current management plan. So we—we've also done a little bit of checking on the availability of shelter and even the program beds and navigation beds during this—this time. And severe weather shelter was available on the night of December 24th. They did have capacity. Path to Home and the shelter have not turned away any clients based on capacity, although they have turned away clients based on violating rules or policies or being banned. So—but from a capacity standpoint, we have not exceeded the capacity for either program or severe weather sheltering and turned people away. Now, this is based on provider information.
So—if I heard you correctly, the—
Turn media.
Okay. You guys— The program beds—
Yeah.
—policy is already in place, according to the coordinated entry.
Yes.
So somebody has been through coordinated entry and they are given a program bed—
They can get a program bed at the shelter, yeah.
—and then they can come and go to the shelter?
Currently, the management plan doesn't allow people to be there during the day. That's one of the changes.
So the new management plan—okay, so—the—so you can have a program bed, but you still can't come and go?
That's right.
Until May?
Or until the new management plan is approved.
Okay, so until the new management—
Because that was one of the—that was one of the changes in the management plan, was to allow people to stay during the day in their program-based shelter.
Okay, so that was my question.
Yes.
So until the managed—the new management plan is in place, the old management plan is what is operating the shelter, basically?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we got a line up here. We have Sam and then—
So just a few— Is that all right? A couple more questions about that situation, but I want to remind us that there were many more people testifying about other situations involved here. So this is one that we're focused on because, of course, there's a fatality involved, which is tragic. But there's other issues with the coordination. So the—my understanding—and this again is not from information that you've provided, but from what others have provided—is that Mr. Harvey went through the intake—the coordinated intake—which is stood up now, right?
That's right.
And so my understanding was from that process that he was also given a program bed designation, which would allow him to, in future, come and go, but which would have indicated that he needed the kinds of support services that were available at the shelter. And so what happens in a situation like this, where you've got somebody that's been banned under kind of a previous mode of operation, we've got this new mode going? And so do the shelter rules trump the referral from the navigation services?
The ruled—the behavioral rules and policies trump a referral from—from coordinated entry. That applies with Bridge House Path to Home as well. If someone has violated behavior or, you know, other rules, they have a—a procedure and a process for warnings and banning people based on the infraction of the rules. Mr. Harvey had been banned from—for one year from the shelter. So even though when the new system of services went in place, when he came through coordinated entry, he was still not allowed to go back to the shelter. Severe weather sheltering was available at the faith-based sites at that time, but he was still banned from the shelter from services.
Well, this is the moment in time when we have the most leverage to get what we want out of the shelter, I feel like, because they need the use allowance from us, and we're negotiating their management plan now. So I believe that issues like this, while we did not direct the city manager previously to think about them, this has fleshed out something that is a problem right now. And so I think that our discussions with them should have something like a reset. In other words, if somebody gets a referral to a program bed, now that we're managing program beds differently, they shouldn't be prevented from accessing the shelter because of a prior ban. So I would ask council's feedback on whether we should direct staff to really focus on that, which is, how do we make sure that we start now helping people in the way we hope to in the future? So there's—
Yeah. Okay, we'll—let's go through the list. We have Sam, Lisa, and Erin.
I agree with Sam, and we—we have to find some kind of a way that when people do go forward and come through coordinated entry, obviously, they want to help themselves to get out of the place that they're at. And so they're making a good faith effort to come into the program, and they should—if they're assigned to have a program bed at the Boulder Housing Shelter—homeless shelter, then they should have that bed. I understand this whole thing about behavior, but some of the behavior and the bans, it's not very clear to me. And I'm trying to find out, you know, the length of these bans. So you just said—and I didn't know—that Mr. Harvey was banned for one year, and then the woman who had been turned away had been banned for two weeks. And it would be really helpful for—to know what—what are their criteria and long-term and short-term bans? And I just have to say that a lot of the people that are in this situation, they don't have access to internet, they don't have phones, they may be somewhat impaired, they have a hard way connecting the dots. And so I really wonder—and so I'll bring this up at the retreat—but I really wonder if we should consider having only one emergency service provider so that it is completely coordinated. So at the night that this—the woman was turned away, instead—and because she had a ban, somebody maybe at the homeless shelter could have called one of our police officers whose duty is to oversee homelessness and say, "We have somebody here. She has had previous violation. She cannot stay here tonight. Could you take her to emergency shelter"? I think, you know, it's really too hard, and we have navigation services for a reason because the people who are in this situation have such a difficult time navigating. And I think it's unrealistic to ask somebody, "Oh, okay, I'm going to go to the homeless shelter tonight, and now I can't get in. Where am I supposed to go? And our churches and synagogues are all over the community." People just don't know. And I think it's asking too much of that individual to know where to go. So I—I really would like to move forward and look at having only one, so everybody knows what their role is and what their job is and what their responsibility is. So I'd like to look at that at the retreat. And right now, I think there's multiple providers, and it's—it's very complicated for somebody who's trying to navigate that system.
And just to—to add some information about that, when the Robbs Music Site is rehabbed and then the overnight sheltering from Path to Home is able to locate there, then that will—that will help reduce that issue of people trying to figure out which night we have—
Right. But I've—I have also heard about that and—and that Bridge House is having very difficult time with our building department in getting permits. And it doesn't look like permits are going to happen until sometime in May. Well, you know, how many people are going to die in that? And that they want them to do—and I'm usually all in favor of this energy improvements and upgrades and stuff. This building is only going to be leased for two years, and then it's going to be torn down. That makes no sense.
Lisa, let's—let's clarify that. I thought—I thought—the—
So I was going to bring that up later.
Wait, 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 but the permits—
That's before us.
Right. Okay, we're going to hold that thought. We got—we have Erin and then Mary as well.
Yeah. Well, I'll bring that up.
Right.
We'll hear more. My understanding is it's coming sooner than that, but we'll know for sure—
Oh, that's good.
—sooner. Karen, if—if someone on these behavioral issues—so someone is banned from the shelter for a period of time, do they have any recourse? Is there anyone they can go to at the city or another organization to say, "Well, they ruled this way, but I felt it was unfair for this reason"?
Right now, the—the appeals process is within the organization.
So it's within the shelter's management? So there's no—
No.
Hey, could you guys please not— You guys, it's really important for us to be able to have this conversation.
Yeah, the city doesn't—no one appeals from—from any of our service providers that we contract with. Based on the policies of the organization, there is no appeal process to the city for those policies that are overseen by an independent board of directors.
Thanks for that answer. So I'll just offer a comment here, then, piggybacking on what Sam said before. If I may, is that all right from a process perspective?
Yeah, yeah.
So they're just—I—Sam, I thought you were on target in terms of the reset, you know, that we're standing up these new set of services, and we should allow that to be, you know, a fresh start. But I'm also—I'm concerned—we're—we're doing this—this new system, which I think has—has a lot of positives to it, but we're changing the way our safety net is working here in town. And we have to make sure that we don't create new holes in that safety net. And I mean, we're getting kind of anecdotal evidence, you know, we need to learn more about exactly how it's working, but I'm concerned that—that we are—that there's the opportunity for people to fall through the cracks. So in addition to that reset, I—I would really like us to explore the possibility of like an ombudsman position, like an advocate role for—whether that's run by the city or a separate organization, but—because right now, if—if you are assigned to the shelter by coordinated entry, you don't have another place to go all the time. And so their decisions there have very significant consequences. And I respect the folks working at the shelter. They're doing very hard work, and it's important work. But I feel like we do need some kind of backstop in order to support people if they feel like there's been some unfairness. So we're still negotiating the management plan, so I would like to see that put on the table as well as something to include as—in our relationship with the shelter in one form or another.
We got Mary and then you?
Yeah, it's—
And I'll go.
So thank you for that, Erin, and I would agree with what you said and with Sam's idea of a reset. And just to—that, if we can add to—to the reset piece of it, to have the ability—or maybe the shelter's already doing this, I don't know, but to make it a policy—work with them to make it a policy—that if someone has been banned and they come to the shelter for a bed, to please call the police and have them go to the emergency shelter. Because as Lisa was saying, they're in different locations, and people don't know how to get there, and which location is a great one.
Yeah, we can—we can check into that more, Karen.
Yeah, and you know, and if—and if it's appropriate to add it to the management plan.
Sorry. Lisa and then Sam.
Yeah, I was just going to comment on Erin's comment about getting an ombudsman. And I don't know if we still have a mediator in-house.
We do.
And so I—I don't know why somebody like that couldn't help as an appeals or—
Well, and we—we've actually expanded the mediation program to work on homeless issues, beginning in 2018. So we have an additional eight hours—eight hours a week for our mediation work group to work on homelessness issues.
Okay, great.
So this is something we could talk with them about as part of the—their program, their new program.
Right. And I—I agree. I'd like to see that in the management plan, but I'm sure you have to come back and—Sam.
So I'd like to return to the temperature trigger issue a little bit and dig into that. I thought Mr. Hamner's testimony was—was pretty interesting and made me think, how did we end up where we are? Who—who set the criteria? I mean, I know the city's funding it, and I know that it was a concern of how many days it would be operated. So what would be the—maybe you can bring back to us, what would be—
Yes.
—difference in cost if we were to adopt those C.D.-C. hypothermia criteria rather than the ones that we currently have?
Yes, so I—yes, and we can definitely bring that information back to you to kind of refresh where we were when we had this conversation several times last year, kind of summarize all of that so that you have that. One of the things about hypothermia is—and sheltering—that when we were doing the research on this from the CDC and Public Health and a variety of sources, is hypothermia can happen at virtually any temperature and condition. It's not just below 32 or below 40. But it has a lot to do with the humidity in the air, the temperature, a variety of factors. So when it comes to humidity and looking at humidity and hypothermia, it's very difficult to have weather triggers that are very specific to when someone might fall into hypothermia. I think when Boho was operating, one of the things that mitigated against this very issue was they—they were operating every night during the major portion of the sheltering season. So that meant that you didn't have to think about weather triggers, and you didn't have to actually get into that. The—the issue that we were seeing across the system, and this was true in other communities also, was that that type of emergency sheltering, which is needed and necessary, but without a tie to programs or services, was growing pretty significantly. And we were putting more and more resources into the day-to-day sheltering that wasn't tied to programs and services. And that was—clearly, that was going to be draining resources from permanent housing and—housing—permanent units that we need for programming. So the system was developed and designed to actually have year-round sheltering for our most high-needs clients, year-round, all day, until permanent housing was—was found for those most vulnerable clients, and then have shorter-term services and sheltering for those who were less vulnerable. But—but to really target services and programs to individual needs. And then to have some additional severe weather sheltering in those times where people who don't want to get into services or, for whatever reason, don't—don't want to go to coordinated entry or programs. But to have some sheltering during those conditions where people need to be off the streets. So what we've seen so far in the system is that we are able to meet the current demand capacity for program-based shelter or housing-focused shelter, as it's now caused—called, plus navigation beds, plus severe weather sheltering. So that's what our experience has been—been so far. The—to have severe weather sheltering, really every night, if we're trying to avoid exposure or hypothermia, we would need to provide that sheltering really every night to make it safe for everyone. And if that's the services of system that we need, then to help people get into services, either program-based sheltering or navigation center, we would have to expand that capacity pretty significantly because we would be expanding the people who would be going through that pipeline.
Right.
But we can—we can provide all that background information for you.
So I recall about 95% of that. The part that I don't really recall is how we got the numbers, we got to—
The triggers?
—is the trigger.
Yes. Yes.
And so that's what I would like to revisit in the context of a fatality that I think we need to just look at. Now, I realize that that evening, that emergency sheltering was open.
Yes.
So it was another problem that's at the root of this, but still in all, I think that, I would like to refresh on that and see how this council thinks.
And I guess I, thank you for all that. It sounds like we have a short list of things.
Yeah.
It seems to me on an immediate basis, though, trying to figure out transportation to emergency shelter for people that are banned is something we could put into place.
Yes, that's something we could, we could.
Kind of immediately.
Yeah, we could, we could definitely do that, because right now, there isn't bus passes to emergency sheltering for people who aren't in a program. I mean, people who are in a program already have sheltering for the night, but what we don't have in place is a bus pass to get to emergency sheltering if you're not in any program or in the system.
Just add, but it's also not just a bus pass. I think there's times people just don't know where to go, and so maybe without a bus pass, I really think it would be good to have police officers involved escorting some of these people.
So let us come up, this is Jane, let us come up with a solution that it might not involve the police department escorting people.
Doesn't matter who it is.
Right, yeah, thanks.
Okay, great, and when, can we follow back up on this?
I just wanted to add one quick comment about bus passes. To get from the North Boulder Shelter to the new shelter, when it is open, would take two buses, and that would be quite difficult. So, so another solution would, would be very helpful.
Okay, and maybe we can, just given the nature of this, I guess, to hear back from you guys soon, at least on that matter, and then ongoing discussions about the shelter plan, right? So just to kind of keep moving forward on this, given that there was a fatality. Okay, great. We good on that? Okay, thank you, Karen, thank you, Jane, thank all of you for coming. With that, we're going to move on to our consent agenda.
You have three items on your consent agenda tonight.
These are all first, two first readings and a notes. Yep. Want to make a motion?
I have a question.
Okay.
I don't have a desire to call up 218 Violet.
We're not there yet.
Oh, no, 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 but I.
On the consent agenda.
But it's on the consent agenda, and I just wanted to say that, because I didn't want any confusion about that. But anyway, on the, on the annexation amendments, the planning board had a motion to include the compatible development ordinance, and I may have missed it, but I didn't see what the rationale was for not including that amendment, if somebody can help me out with that.
So actually, David, can you come up here and sort of explain, this is a complicated one, since it's a call-up and an ordinance change, and maybe you can explain that and also answer that question?
All right, so I guess directly to, David, you're from the city attorney's office. So to directly answer Mary's question, we can get you, you know, it was in the minutes from the planning board meeting, and we can report that, we can consider that a first reading question, and we'll report back on the planning board's discussion and its rationale. It's kind of a complicated project in terms of going forward. A lot of the properties that are involved in this development proposal were annexed in the late 1990s, and they were annexed with conditions that were, I guess, standard for those times. Included amongst them were affordable housing requirements that were in our early days of creating affordable, affordable housing, and frankly, do not provide the same level of affordability that we are, that we expect from development right now. A unique opportunity came up when Habitat for Humanity became interested in the property that fronts on Violet. So there was a proposal made for Violet, or Habitat for Humanity, to buy that parcel, and you approved a, an exemption for our subdivision process in the recent past, so that they were able to secure funding for the purchase of that property. So part of this whole thing is, I think it's an intersection of the property owner's desire to transfer, or the property owner of the south half of the Violet, of the Habitat parcel, plus a few other properties that he owns, to transfer the affordable housing requirements all on to the Habitat parcel, and to do it at a permanent level and, and at a standard that is typical for today's affordable housing projects. So to, for all of that to work, there's a lot of different things that have to happen. The first being that the annexation agreements associated with all of those properties and their affordable housing requirements need to be annexed. For the Habitat for Humanity project to pencil out, they needed a little bit additional density to get the unit count that they needed for the, for the project to work for them. So there's an ordinance associated with granting that density legislatively. And then finally, a site review approval, which is subject to call-up tonight. And the site review approval basically approves the site plan that Habitat would use to implement their affordable housing project. So there's a lot of interlocking pieces that the, that will need to take place for all of this to work, if we want to make it work.
And so now to the compatibility issue and sort of the, what can happen on those other parcels with regard to house size? And if we wanted to influence that, where in this process would we do that?
Okay, so the, those annexation agreements had some, dare I say, light touch, design standards that were built into them, again, probably nothing like the way that we regulate for compatible development now. If the council wanted to affect how that part of the arrangement were to work, it would be done in the context of the conversation that you'll have at a future meeting about whether or not you're willing to approve the annexation, the annexation agreement amendments that would be necessary to make the project work.
So in those, we could, when that annexation amendment comes forward, we would be able to modify some of the site plans that are in the call-up tonight. And that's where we would affect size of houses, maybe have FAR put in some size limits of structures and rezoning.
Yeah, so that's where you would address all of those issues, would be in that conversation. And of course, when we get into the realm of annexation agreements, it is contractual in nature, so it's not kind of absolute. It would be done in the context of negotiation, and what level of, whether it be community benefit, or what we get on our side of the bargain, would be acceptable for the council to approve this arrangement.
Right. So let me make sure, oh, go ahead.
So wouldn't, you just raised a question for me that I'd like to be clear on. So because it's all tied to the site review then, I know I just said that I, was it, the site review criteria, I, I know I said that I didn't want to call it up, but would it make, might it make sense to call it up? But, or can it be handled purely through the annexation?
Well, ultimately, it can be handled through the annexation agreement. I think that if the council desires to kind of really get into messing around with the site plan and the conditions of approval in the site plan, then you'd want to call it up. If it's tweaking it, or doing a little bit here and there, I, I don't know that that would be necessary.
Well, in, in this current site plan that we have in front of us, there's no compatible development requirement, there's no FAR development requirement. I have no problem with the 2180 Violet property. I do have a significant problem with lots that start at 76, 80, and go all the way up to 58,000 square feet, and having no, no compatible development, no FAR conditions. And the last thing we need is a bunch more giant houses. And so I would hope that the, the city's interest would be best served by having much smaller units, by having maybe some duplexes, by restricting the size of the structures. And so I plan on sending an email to you, to council tomorrow with some things, and just to, to let people know. But we cannot continue, we have six, nine, 11 potential lots that could all be giant houses, and that is unacceptable.
So in that regard, I mean, I think it would be helpful, since we're kind of in that first reading context, of if council and council members have comments, questions, ideas, you know, that it would be great if you could post them to the hotline, and it would help us prepare for that next meeting.
So, so again, it sounds like, the first time you said annexation amendment is the place to have that conversation? Given what Lisa just said, if we wanted to make those kind of changes, that's the place to do it, and we don't need to call this up tonight?
I think, well, first of all, calling it up is within your discretion. My general advice would be, if you're, if you're tweaking or kind of developing.
If we're going to do that, whatever you call that, is that tweaking?
And I think that, you know.
That's a pretty big tweak.
This is a giant tweak compared to what they could do, and what I envision as what the city needs.
So I guess, here's my question. Where would you advise us to have that conversation? Should we call it up to have that conversation, or can we do that level of tweaking?
Well, let me ask this. So what, what are the current conditions in the annexation agreement?
For?
For.
Still want him to.
Yeah, so for, as far as how things affect the site review, the, the site plan.
Well, they still have to, they're still required to go through the site review process, but the annexation agreement of, of conditions of that time, it was basically, there were, you know, it was explicitly no FAR limitations. I think that we were, when we were annexing those properties, I think it was in the early years of the community conversation that we were having about compatible development, I think that property owners that were coming into the city were concerned about limitations, which is why they negotiated those types of conditions.
But I'm referring to the, the amendment, amendments that are currently before us. Are there any conditions that were set on their?
In the annexation amendment.
In the annexation amendment.
Being proposed, are there conditions?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Sam has some questions.
Suzanne, may I answer your question, though? Because I'm not sure David did all the way.
He didn't, Sam was going to ask it a different way.
So can I try, take a shot at answering it?
Yes.
As David said, annexation agreement approval is contractual. You have a lot more leverage to do that. The other side, of course, has to agree. In site review, anything you do has to be criteria-based. Now, you have, you have discretion of the criteria, but you, you are somewhat constrained. It's sort of hard for us to answer your question, because we don't know exactly what you want to do. The planning board, as, as you know, considered a motion to impose the compatible development requirements on the annexation. The reason they did that was because when they adopted the compatible development ordinance, it excluded properties in annexation, if in their annexation agreement, it didn't require compliance. You could impose those as part of a contractual agreement, and that's what planning board attempted to do, but it was voted down. So when the annexation agreement comes to council, you could reverse that decision, as is your right, and impose the compatible development as part of the annexation. If that's what, what you want to do, your ability to do that is in the annexation. As David says, if you want to do more in the site review process on the criteria-based, then that, you should call up the site review to do that, but we don't know what that is, so we can't really answer that. Does that help?
Yes, that does. Sam?
So this sounds like a chicken and egg kind of issue that we come up with every once in a while. I understand and agree that our ability to require this is negotiation through annexation. I'd refer council members to page 35 of their packet if they'd like to see the notes from the planning board and see what the actual motion was that failed four to three. Would it be better for the developer, in your opinion, if they were called up together, so called up and annexation was considered at the same time, so that we were, if we were going to impose these standards, we could make clear what it was that we wanted to do? Or should we just set the annexation agreement terms and let the developer respond?
You can do it either way. And like I said, in terms of, you know, if, to the extent that you want to dig into the site plan and talk about site planning issues, I think you should call it up. If the issue is more of the programmatic side of adding a few conditions and tweaking affordability requirements or those types of things.
Or imposing the compatible development.
Or imposing, yes.
Which, that's your, that's your major concern, you should do that. Remember, though, if you do not call it up, your ability to change the site review is gone. You're basically affirming the planning board and saying you agree with them. So this is your one chance to do that.
Erin?
Sam, I want to follow up on how that interaction might work. So, because the site review includes, I mean, it has drawings of buildings, right, on those individual lots, right, which may or may not be compatible with the compatible development regulations, I don't know offhand. But if we were to negotiate a change to the annexation agreement that, for example, imposed compatible development regulations, and let's say that box drawn on the lot as part of the site review didn't comply with those, where does that leave us?
I think that the staff's view of that is, the annexation agreement always trumps. So if you, you know, that, that in terms of whenever there's a conflict in anything, it's usually backstopped by whatever's in the annexation agreement.
So that would then, if we were to, for example, impose additional requirements in the annexation agreements, but also approve the site review, if, if there were some new conditions that kind of overruled the site review, they would still overrule, they wouldn't invalidate the site review, I guess is the question?
That's correct, and you know, there's always the opportunity, if the council so directed as part of an annexation discussion, where the council said, in terms of a condition, applicant and staff, please work out the conditions on how this will work in a manner consistent with whatever standard you set in your conversation, and we could, we could take it back and just require them to do another round of review to get it consistent with, with where you ultimately end up in terms of that negotiated agreement.
So.
So if I just can make a statement here, it's like we're potentially leading up to a call-up. I just want to be clear, I'm interested in exploring these ideas, but to me, it's, it's critically important that we not endanger the Habitat project. So that, that was the thrust of that question. So I'm happy if council's interested in calling this up, so we have full freedom, that's fine with me. I just want to get that out on the table, want to make sure that we don't endanger this important project for our community.
So I agree, but just to get very clear, the site review right now has the streets, the lots orientation, and it doesn't have compatible development, but they're all still very big lots. So if we didn't want to impose compatible development, but wanted to put a specific size on those lots, that's possible.
That's possible, sure.
And we could also give options in terms of, perhaps they could have a duplex or something like, okay.
Exactly, and as I mentioned earlier, to the extent that you guys can start putting your ideas up on hotline, it will help staff be prepared for that conversation when you next visit this.
Okay. Regarding what Erin just said about that, not endangering the Habitat for Humanity piece, is there any way to separate these out? So that, I'm just, yeah.
Probably through the annexation agreement.
Oh, okay.
So.
We'll work on that. Okay, well, given all that just happened, what are we proposing here? That gets us, allows us to have the conversations and make the changes we want on the one.
Yeah, February 6th, this is the second reading of the annexation amendment, and at that point, we should have had, you know, emails, hotline, of what it is we would like to see, and so we'll all hear each other's ideas. And I'm hoping, and I'm trusting, that we can significantly reduce the amount of square footage of the units that are on these other lots.
But Suzanne, I was just going to answer your question. To your point, I mean, it, it sounds like we wouldn't necessarily have to call up the site review in order to make annexation agreement changes, but that it might be safer to call up the site review in order to keep all of our options open. And for, personally, I'm comfortable with that, as it looks like we do that without endangering the fundamentals.
Okay.
I, I agree with that. That's very close to what I was going to say, which is that I think we're also doing a favor to everyone concerned with the project if we both call it up and then hear the annexation agreements, because I was going to ask the question, if we call it up and it hasn't gotten to us, well, I'll. us, well, I'll just support Aaron's idea, that we both call it up and pass this with an amendment, which I think we can do a second read.
Correct.
Right. And if I can just say one, there were some screwy things done with the lot lines that enlarged some of the lots and gave them right-of-way, what would have been right-of-way or easement. And so we really, I got a copy of the planning board document and have read that, and there was a lot of things. So I think it's probably good to call this thing up, and we don't want to endanger habitats, structures at all. What we're trying to do is get more affordable housing, so.
Okay. And so we will vote on that under matters, and...
Does someone need to actively express some interest?
Well, I think you guys just did.
Yeah. And I said at CAC, I wanted to call it up.
Okay.
Or that's how I just interpreted what happened.
I'll actively express interest.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, David. All right.
You ready to vote?
Well, no, I think it, don't we have to put it under matters, and that way somebody can speak to it?
You're still on the consent agenda.
Oh, sorry. Good God.
Well, we need a motion.
Okay, so we're back to the consent agenda.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Could I ask council to substitute the blue version of the ordinance eight, three, two, four?
Yeah, with, I'll move the consent agenda with the blue version of the ordinance eight, two, three, four, as supplied by staff.
And just tell us briefly, how does this differ from what was in our packet?
It doesn't differ at all substantively. At CAC on Monday, Councilmember Brockett expressed some concern about the wording of the language in section 10-1 and the definition of short-term rental, which is on the second page of this. The idea was that we were attempting to limit short-term rentals for the purpose of meetings, and the way that the language was drafted, we wanted to make clear that we weren't trying to prohibit people from having meetings where they were uncompensated, but it was written in an awkward way, so the modifier was misplaced. I rewrote it and put in the language to make it clear what we were trying to do, I think more clear. Thank you.
Gotcha. Okay.
I also put in the missed comma that you...
Oh, yeah, the comma. Thank God we have the comma. All right. So all those in favor, raise your hand? It is unanimous? Okay. We already discussed the call-up for now?
Well, still, we have to have just a...
We just said, we're going to vote to call it up at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Moving on, your first public hearing is ordinances related to the landmarking of properties on Pine Street. And Marcy Cameron will present this matter to council.
Marcy, can I swear you in? Will you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the information you are about to give before the Boulder City Council is true? Please state your name and department.
Hold on. Marcy Cameron, Planning, Housing and Sustainability.
Thank you.
All right. Hello, Happy New Year. I will start with the procedure for this hearing. First, all speaking to the item will be sworn in, and all give a staff presentation followed by the owner's presentation, and then it'll open up for public comment. Council may ask questions of any of us. And then the public hearing is closed, and the council discusses. A motion requires an affirmative vote of a majority of city council members to pass the motion. Motions must state findings, conclusions, and a recommendation. And finally, a record of the hearing is kept by staff. So tonight, you all may approve the designations by ordinance, modify and approve or disapprove the designations. The criteria for your decision is found in 911-1 and 911-2 of the Boulder Revised Code to determine whether the subject properties meet the criteria for individual landmark designations and are in balance with the goals and policies of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan. These seven designations came in through the Attention Homes Project, which came in through site review, and the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan states that if there are eligible buildings as part of the development, that they be protected through local landmark designation. The Church has had a long association with the properties on this block and are in support of this designation. The Historic Preservation Ordinance, which was adopted in 1974, was, the purpose is to enhance property values, stabilize neighborhoods, promote tourist trade, and enhance and foster knowledge of the city's living heritage. The subject property is located on the 1400 block of Pine Street, between 14th and 15th, and between Pine and Spruce. It's located in the potential Whittier Historic District and just north of the designated Downtown Historic District. So the code asks us to consider the property's architectural, environmental, and historic significance, and because there are a number of properties coming forward at this time, I don't want to go through each and every one maybe as much in detail as I would. But in terms of the architectural significance, they all are examples of popular architectural styles, including Italianate, Queen Anne, and Forest Square. And each one has a really, really neat level of craftsmanship and detailing, including these arched windows and the decorative scrollwork and leaded glass windows, as well as this molded brick and the Italianate porch supports there. But this presentation, I want to focus a little bit on the stories that you wouldn't see walking past this block. And a few of the properties are associated with people that made individual contributions to Boulder in the early 20th century. The Calhouns, who are located there on the left, built three of the houses on this block, and they also owned a dry goods store. Louis Herman, who is near the middle there, was a German immigrant, and he also had a business downtown. And then the picture of the child on the right was one of the Garabinos, and they operated an auto garage where Old Chicago is now for a very long time. So in addition to prominent businessmen, doctors, and an aspiring lawyer, most of the properties had a series of short-term tenants. And so for those, I wish we had photos for all of them. Photos were a little more rare and expensive than they are now, so we can turn to the U.S. Census records and get an idea of kind of the people that lived here through their occupations. So as you go through the records, they change and kind of give you an idea for what Boulder was like in the early 20th century. So you had a livery operator, a dressmaker, a seamstress, railway auditor, there is a city council member that lived in the building that is now Lucille's, servant and a grocery clerk, as well as a high school teacher. All of the properties are significant historically for their association with the First United Methodist Church, which is one of the earliest congregations here in Boulder. When this building was landmarked in 2000, it was recognized not only for its architectural merit, but also for its contribution that it made to the community in terms of providing a variety of social services over the years, including the construction of the Fraser Meadows Retirement Facility, and then providing space for several community nonprofits, including hospice, the Women's Resource Center, and the Boulder County AIDS Project. And each of the properties that are proposed for landmark designation tonight were acquired by the church. The parsonage, which is just north of the church, was built specifically for that purpose in 1903. The rest were acquired between 1959 and the late 1970s. And then in terms of its environmental significance, it is located in the potential Whittier Historic District, which retains its historic character, and these buildings will remain as visual landmarks and an acre for that neighborhood. The proposed landmark boundaries follow the property lines for five of the seven properties, and then for two, it's a portion of the property, and that's to allow the new...
Finish your sentence, and then I have a question for you.
That's for the new development that has been approved.
Thanks, Marcy. Real quick question. In this layout here, what would be the public realm? What is the public realm as in this diagram that we see here?
Oh, I see. It would be the boundary around, so 14th Street, it would be to the west, 15th to the east, Pine to the north, and, oh, Spruce to the south, that's a mistake.
Okay. So the street frontage?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep. I was almost finished. So with that, both staff and the Landmarks Board recommend that the city council designate these seven properties as individual landmarks, and I'll put the findings on the screen, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does anyone have questions?
I do.
Mary?
And that has to do with the difference between a historic district and just the individual properties. And in the memo, the memo said that the only difference was that with a historic district, that would be, it would affect the public realm, and that changes to the public realm would need to come forward for approval. So is that, did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay. So with individual properties, does that mean that changes to the public realm don't have to be reviewed?
Right. So in this case, depending on where the boundary would be, typically, it's to the middle of the street in a historic district, and so that covers changes to, say, the sidewalks or street furniture that's there. But the review, the required review for the individual properties is the same. And so staff considers that individual landmark provides the same level of protection as the historic district designation.
So if I understood what you just said correctly, that if, in a historic district, if you wanted to pull up the sidewalk and put in a new sidewalk, it would have to be approved, and in this situation, it's not?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
But, I mean, sidewalk in the right-of-way, you can't just pull that up and change it, right?
Right.
I mean, there are other rules that would prevent you from pulling up the sidewalk and putting in a new one.
Right. It's whether the Historic Preservation Program would review that change.
Yeah, but it'd still be up to the city?
Yes. Yep.
So, okay, now I have to jump in. Obviously, this is a wonderful thing, and that's great, but presumably, historic districts do have value. I understand the applicant don't want to go there, and that's fine, but presumably, there's reasons to have historic districts that go beyond repaving the sidewalks, right?
Yes, absolutely.
So I just wanted to be clear for the record, that there could be bigger reasons in the future to look at a district, right?
Absolutely. And this would be eligible for a small historic district if the owner was supportive of that and if you all...
And sometime in the future, that could always happen.
Right. It's a good way to kind of protect the character of a larger area and then kind of review the change within that.
Okay. I just want to be clear.
Well, and now I want to be clear again.
Okay.
So I gave the sidewalk example, but that may not have been a good example, now that I've heard what you said. And so, Marcy, could you provide an example of where the public realm not being the sidewalk, what other kind of change might happen where it would not be reviewed under this situation, and it would be reviewed in a historic district?
Well, looking at just the requirement for review, it really is anything outside of what's shown on those boundaries, and so that does include the sidewalk or lights or street furniture. Another difference, when reviewing changes, you would look at how the change would impact the character of that specific building, and then also how it would change the district as a whole, or impact the district as a whole. If this were a small historic district, then all seven properties would be contributing. And so it really, there isn't a big difference in this case of individual versus historic district.
Okay, thank you. Okay. So no more questions, let us turn to the public hearing. And maybe the applicant?
Yep.
Yep.
Good evening and Happy New Year, John Kotke.
Sir, can I... Can I swear you in? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Do you swear that the information you are about to give before the Boulder City Council is true?
Yes.
Will you please state your name and address for the record, please?
John Kotke, office address is 2975 Valmont.
Thank you very much.
You bet. I'm here tonight, actually, as the lay leader of First United Methodist Church, and just to say that the church is indeed supportive of making this, I consider it a gift, if you will, to the city. My wife and I, Len and I, have been attending this church since 1972. We joined in 1976, so it's a long time ago. And I remember when we first started attending, hearing stories about literally United Methodist Women Bake Sales and youth car washes to raise money that the congregation was doing to acquire the properties around the block. The church has had decided at that point in time that if it could do this, that it would be a wonderful thing for the community and for the church. They were successful in doing that, actually, prior to Len and I becoming members of the church. And since that time, the issue has been, what is the best use of this city block, if you will? The church was initially located in the corner of 14th and Spruce in 1872, but it was just that little corner. And subsequent to that, then the church indeed acquired the whole block. For the past number of years, we've been using the block to support our social justice goal of our church by supporting nonprofits in the community. Boulder County AIDS Project, Out Boulder, Attention Homes has clearly been one of our partners as well, and there have been a number over the years. But we have still always been looking at what would be an appropriate, better use for the property than it was. When we heard about the Attention Home Project and the possibility, and particularly hearing the discussion tonight about the homelessness that we were all concerned about, and the ability to address homelessness among young people in our community, our congregation was 100% behind it, and that's the basis upon which we basically said, use our property to make this happen. And as a part of that, we said, if it would also add to the application to make this project a possibility, we would be willing to landmark the rest of the block, in part because we were hearing concerns of neighbors as we went through this process, that they were concerned about the whole block was going to be changing character. That is not the church's desire. We love our church, it's already been landmarked, you know, we are really excited about the Attention Homes Project, and this is essentially what we can do as a church, as a congregation, to assure not only the neighborhood, but the community as a whole, that our intent is to preserve the historical nature of this block for perpetuity. So that's what we're doing. Questions?
Does anybody have questions? I think mostly we just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do see it as a gift.
Well, thank you. We were really excited. I was a little concerned. It was a very complicated project, as you all know, but I just got confirmation, I was on the East Coast over the holidays, and I got confirmation while I was back there that the financing finally had closed and everything had happened, because I was a little unsure what I was going to do tonight if I was here and we still hadn't closed the financing on that to make this all happen. But it's a go now, so we're definitely, we're definitely ready. Thank you.
All right. Well, congrats all around. Okay, now we'll turn to the public hearing. I guess everybody needs to be sworn in.
Maybe they do.
Just one at a time. All right.
Will you please raise your right hand? Do you swear that the information you are about to give before the Boulder City Council is true?
Yes.
Will you please state your name and address for the record?
Eric Budd, 3025 Broadway, and I'm here as a representative of the Boulder Landmarks First of all, I wanted to thank the First United Methodist Church. You know, when this project came forward, really taking the opportunity and really looking at the historic resources as part of the site review is a wonderful process that we have in the city of Boulder, and having a willing partner is an incredibly important thing, and I just want to recognize that. And just hearing all the stories tonight about the struggle with homelessness in our community, and looking at the challenges with this project, and realizing that proposing a project like the Attention Homes in a neighborhood is, it is change. It is something that is a progression that we all are trying to deal with. But looking at the flip side of it, which is taking a lot of these historic buildings and landmarking them as part of that project, I think is really a bridge between the old and the new. And... and the new. And some of the special things that I saw about this one are, there's 1424 Pine Street, which is actually a building that's moving just slightly, and to be part of the arrangement of buildings. And while moving a building is generally not recommended, I think what we're going to get in the final product is we're actually going to get a repairing and a restitching of what is in this neighborhood. We've got basically some holes where, you know, if you were there 70 or 80 years ago, you would have seen additional homes, which are currently parking lots. And I think it's really special to both repair and preserve these historic buildings while also giving an opportunity to continue to evolve and grow as a community. And I think it's really special to see that both the old and the new buildings are going to be largely dedicated to public services and supporting those in our community who most need our support. So I encourage you to support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Abby Daniels?
Hi.
Do you swear that the information you are about to give before the Boulder City Council is true?
I do.
Will you please state your name and address for the record?
Abby Daniels, Director of Historic Boulder, 1200 Pearl Street.
Thank you.
Good evening. For more than 45 years, I think most of you know Historic Boulder has advocated for saving the places that matter. And none of us at Historic Boulder were surprised to learn that Boulder was designated the happiest city in the U.S. And we were even happier that in one of the quotes from the author, he actually called out preservation policies as contributing to that. As the elected stewards of our historic resources, we know that working alongside you, we can make a difference and contribute to both the happiness and perhaps more importantly, the pride our community shares with our historic resources, our open space, and so forth. We wholeheartedly support the landmarking of these seven properties, and we appreciate the efforts of everyone that came together to make this happen. Adding these buildings to the already landmarked First United Methodist Church ensures that this well-traveled, prominent block will retain a lot of its existing character that's been forged over the decades, providing the perfect transition from the downtown historic district to the wittier neighborhood. When a historic district is formed, or an enclave of buildings such as these are preserved, we often search for a theme that connects the buildings. When you consider the good works of the church, B. Cap, Outboulder, and Attention Homes, perhaps the connection is best captured by the words found on the church's own website by John Wesley. Do all the good you can, by all the means you can, in all the places you can, at all the times you can, with all the people you can, as long as you can. This block serves as the nucleus for so much good. I don't know if there's a better block in Boulder that represents so much social service and great beignets. So Historic Boulder does urge you to landmark these buildings tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Abby. And then finally, Lynn Segal.
Will you please raise your right hand? Hi. Do you swear that the information you are about to give before the Boulder City Council is true?
Absolutely.
Would you please state your name and address?
Lynn Segal, 538 Dewey. Yeah, I support the landmarking of these buildings. But I took the opportunity to make my point about my concern for the development of Attention Homes on the site, not because I don't appreciate that the disadvantaged youth in our society are taken care of, but in the way that that was pushed through, through an out-of-state developer and for extra density and for parking, that will be problematic in 40 years when the agreement is over. I believe it's something like 40 years, so that then we will have parking issues, although there aren't parking issues now for these troubled youth. And also because I don't think that it's honoring Judge Holmes's work with Attention Homes in that he wanted a different paradigm of youth going from one site to another and graduating up to another and another as they get better and better adjusted to society. And this is not going to happen in this site. And so for that reason, you know, I'm opposed, I support the landmarking of it, but I'm opposed to how that whole deal came down. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Lynn. Okay, with that, we all close the public hearing. Counsel, how about a motion or a discussion?
All right, I could do it myself. I'll move it. Okay.
I move that we adopt ordinances 8224, 8225, 8226, 8227, 8228, 8229, and 8230, designating five properties at 140608 Pine Street, 1414 Pine Street, 2118 14th Street, 2124 14th Street, and 2132 14th Street, and portions of two properties at 1424 Pine Street and 1443 Spruce Street, each as individual landmarks under the city's historic preservation ordinance.
Want to speak to it?
Sure. This is fantastic. Thank you for your gift to the city. We appreciate all the good works that the church has done in all of these buildings. So thank you very much.
Anything, anybody want to add, other than ditto that? And yeah, we're glad to see this come all to fruition, and we really do appreciate, well, just the long history of service from the church. We're counting on it. All right.
So roll call vote. We start with Councilmember Weaver.
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Brockett?
Aye.
Carlisle?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Morzell?
Aye.
Nagel?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
Great. Thank you so much.
Your next public hearing is a motion to adopt emergency ordinance 8231 regarding day and overnight shelter use. Let me introduce David Gere.
Thank you. Give me a second here to-- 14. I think it's this one. No. I don't see it on there. What would be a chance? There we go. All right. Good evening, members of council. I'm David Gere with the City Attorney's Office, and I'll be presenting, doing the staff presentation for this item tonight. We also have some folks in the audience who, if you have questions about some of the programmatic aspects of Bridge House and what is going to be happening on this property, they will be here and available for questions. So basically, it's a pretty simple item that's part of a kind of a more complicated project to put together some of our homeless services. Basically, what we're going to be asking the council to do tonight is to waive some parking standards and some occupancy standards that will allow the property that's located at 2691 30th Street to be used for day sheltering, emergency sheltering, and for the provisions of services related to the homelessness intake program. There we go. So I think we're all familiar with this property. It's, as I mentioned, it's 2691 30th Street. We often refer to it as the Rob's Music or the Ringmaker property. But it's basically on the west side of 30th Street, north of Pearl and south of Valmont. There we go. So Bridge House seeks to cite its Path to Home Navigation Center and day and overnight sheltering to this property. The Path to Home Navigation Program will provide 24/7 sheltering and case management services for homeless adults. This program has been selected by the city to provide navigation services as part of the city of Boulder's homelessness strategy. It will also provide for onsite coordinated entry services in addition to program services, including meals, sleeping, and supportive service program for the participants. This site was identified as an appropriate location for these uses, and the property was purchased by a local developer who will eventually be redeveloping the site for affordable housing. The city has also helped with the purchase price, the purchase of this property, and also the leasing of the property to Bridge House for these temporary services. We're really attempting in this project to keep expenses down, to get this program up and going, while at the same time ensuring that basic life safety standards of the building are being met. In the near future, the city and Bridge House hope to assess the expense, the success of this program in the near term, and then at that point, we will determine whether or not we make this permanent program and find a permanent home for the property. Just briefly, this is basically a site plan for the property. As you can see, there's generally plenty of property on the site. Also, there's a lack of really usable open space, but we believe that this use does not necessarily need a lot of usable open spaces. This is the floor plan for the building. For the most part, the sheltering services, the day sheltering and the overnight services will be provided in the northern half of the building. So as I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, we're proposing with this ordinance to just modify a couple of standards based on the fact that there's not much usable open space on the property. The potential occupancy load is quite low, and we're proposing to raise it from 24, that's allowed by our code now, to 50 people. And then the other item that we're seeking to council's approval tonight is just to grant a parking reduction. We believe that, given the folks that are going to be served by this property and probably the lack of automobiles associated with the clients, together with the anticipated volunteer and employee load on the use of land, that the parking on the site is more than adequate. So with all of that said, staff recommends that you adopt this ordinance tonight.
Hey, do you have any questions for David?
I do.
So previously, when we were talking about the building being ready to occupy, I mentioned that I had heard, and I don't know if it's true or not, but that there was some issue with the building department in granting building permits and desire to have some kind of energy efficiency standards put into the building. Could you address that, please?
Yeah, I think that we've been attempting to work through all of these issues, and frankly, perhaps Kurt Fernhoffer, our Housing Deputy Director, could answer that question as he has been much more involved in the day-to-day setting up of this use.
Thanks.
Good evening. Kurt Fernhoffer, Deputy Director of Housing. So let me just give a little history on that as well. When this project came into view, it was already under contract to be purchased. And we were able to work, ourselves and Andy Allison were able to work with the developer to change their direction for affordable housing. At that time, we did a due diligence on the property, but in a very limited amount of time. When they went in for building permits, and there was a walkthrough with city staff, including building staff during that due diligence process. However, during the permit process, some things did come up related to health and safety issues. I'm not going to speak on behalf of the building department tonight.
I expect you to.
And I know that they've, and we've had meetings around this, working with the applicants to not, you know, enforce anything that they don't have to. And so they've worked with, through both the energy codes and other issues as well. The applicant does have the property in for building permit. It's in process right now. My understanding is it's moving along. I'm not aware of any long delays, as you mentioned earlier.
Yeah, I just heard that, so--
I think that was an old thing that they've overcome.
Yeah. No, and so this is good.
Yeah. There still are challenges that we're working with that aren't fully worked through yet. But, you know, we are working with the building department around those issues.
No, that's great. And certainly, they should address public safety and health issues, so.
Right.
I wasn't suggesting that they not do that. Cool. Any other questions?
Okay, public hearing. Mike Comner, you're our public. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Mike Comner. I just wish you guys will do this and streamline it as fast as you can. This will make a hub for all the coordinated entry, for people who want to know where to go, where to stay. It'll make life so much easier for people on the street. And you can't do this fast enough. And once it's done, and we look two years down the line or whatever, we really need to do this as a permanent thing. They have a good system set up. I think it's something that can grow and grow well and help a lot of people out. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And one more. Why don't you come on up?
I'm Alan Halpern, the Executive Director of Congregation Harshem at 3950 Baseline Road. My first experience with Boho and Bridge House was about a year ago when I had just started my job, and it was dark, and I was at my desk, and somebody knocked on the window and asked whether the shelter was operating in our other building. And after I peeled myself off the roof of my office, I said, yes, it's across the parking lot. We've partnered with Boho and Bridge House for the last decade. They have been great partners, responsible tenants, really considerate of our people and our buildings. They have been a great source of advice and counsel when we are interacting with people who visit our building or our campus, either looking for homeless services or support. We have had very rare incidences where either the police needed to be called, or there was some circumstance that required some kind of response. And we have always found Boho and Bridge House to be completely responsible and timely and helpful in their advice. And I suspect that our neighbors have as much or more hesitation about the music at our outdoor services occasionally during the year as they do about the homeless people who may be coming to our facility to sleep. So as I think back to my first experience a year ago, the startled response may be the natural response when we're talking about a new facility in a neighborhood, but I'm as startled by any sudden noise or unexpected movement, which could as easily be a rabbit when I'm out walking my dog as it is a homeless person rapping on my window. I encourage the council to adopt the resolution, and I think it's quite appropriate on an evening where you passed a Historic Preservation Resolution to do, to make a comparable commitment to the homeless.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
No, I want to make a motion.
Can I have just a question first?
Yep.
Kurt, this is for you. Sorry to call you back up again. I just thought it would be worth asking what the city put towards this project. So how much for the eventual affordable housing do you expect, and how much have we put towards making the building suitable for Bridge House?
Right. So we believe the amount that we'll be supporting towards the renovations of this for the current use that we're discussing now is about $350,000. I'm blanking out on the exact amount that we use to support the purchase of the property, and I can get that to you on hotline.
That'd be great. Is it in order of a million or two?
Couple million, yeah.
Couple million.
And-- And we can, there's covenants on the property currently, and we're looking towards around 50 affordable housing units on the site when it's eventually redeveloped.
Okay, great. Okay, so we're done with the public hearing? Any more discussion? Okay, how about this? I'll make a motion that we adopt emergency ordinance 8231 as an amendment to Title IX Land Use Code, granting authority to the city manager to approve a day shelter and overnight shelter use at 2691 30th Street to modify density and parking standards as they apply to the use. Second? Great. I think this is also a fantastic project, and a, an integral piece to our sort of newly adapted approach to homeless services, and I'm thrilled that the Bridge House is stepping up to do it, and looking forward to opening it. My understanding is it's supposed to open, or we're hoping for the project to be completed by March? Okay, great. So I'm very supportive of this.
Yeah, and I just want to say thank you to the developer, and Bridge House, and Boho, everybody in the city really working together, and that's what we need, everyone working as one for a common purpose. And I think this will, as Mr. Comner said, be a great next step in our trying to resolve some of the problems we have in Boulder, so thank you.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. We start with Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Rocket?
Aye.
Carlisle?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Morzelle?
Aye.
Nagel?
Aye.
Weaver?
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Yay.
Thank you.
Your next item is the discussion of major planning and housing work plan items.
So Leslie Ellis and Kurt Fernhopper will be presenting most of this item, but Jim Robertson is here to do a quick introduction.
Hey, before you do that, let me just say to all of us that, well, and maybe you're going to say this, but this isn't the be-all and end-all discussion. We are going to have that at our retreat. This is to make sure we have all the information in order to have a great discussion at our retreat. So I just wanted to clarify that. Well, okay, so here's how it works. At the retreat, we kind of decide, but then we officially decide at a following business meeting. But it's just that-
Excuse me, we essentially decided the retreat, and we ratified the decisions-
Okay, that's a better way to say it. So yes, and the whole idea is we're going to spend a lot of time thinking about priorities. This is just a subset of our priorities. These are, maybe these are top priorities, and what, some of the things that we said we wanted to do have ramifications in terms of timing and order and priorities, and that's what we want to get a lot of clarity on tonight, so that when we look at the whole picture at our retreat, we are ready to make decisions. Okay, sorry. I hope I didn't steal your thunder.
No, thank you. Good evening again, Mayor and Council. I'm Jim Robertson, Director of Planning, Housing, and Sustainability. Just, I'll take this moment to acknowledge, the city clerk is handing to you right now a relatively fresh-off-the-press version of the Boulder Valley Comprehensive Plan as amended by the update that was just completed months ago. I'll take the opportunity to thank my colleagues at the Planning Department who put in thousands and thousands of hours on it, but really thank the members of the community, and you, and your president, former colleagues, and other decision-makers in their role in bringing this to reality, so.
And this one's good for 10 years, right? So we can really keep it on the shelf for a good long time.
Yeah, I expect it to look dog-eared.
That's right.
Yeah, right. So I won't take much of your time. I just want to thank you for providing us the opportunity tonight to, as the mayor said, begin a discussion of your priorities in the realms of planning and housing for the coming two-year period. Thank you also for the work you did prior to the holidays in submitting to Hotline the input that you provided in terms of your, your sort of individual priorities. As the mayor said, tonight's the beginning of a discussion we anticipate will roll over into the council retreat in about 10 days. With no further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Leslie and Kurt, who will give you a brief introduction to sort of our work plans as they exist today, so you have that as a reference point. And I think we also have a little time devoted to some of the issues we have heard from you about in terms of your priorities, to begin the discussion on that. With that, I'll let Leslie take it away.
Okay. Good evening. Leslie Ellis, Comprehensive Planning Manager. Thanks for having us here this evening, and we are here, as you've already mentioned, to start a conversation with you about work plan items that will carry through to the retreat and then probably be finalized immediately after that. So Kurt and I have about 20 minutes to share with you, and we'll be talking tonight about, first, some context, and, first of all, the work plan context for planning and housing, and secondly, what we saw in your responses, and some of the items that were of greatest interest to you. And I think we have, again, plenty of time to discuss each of these topics after we present them. These are some of the items that we saw that had quite a bit of interest on the part of many of the council members, and so we'll be prepared to talk about those this evening. So you've heard us probably say before in our department in planning, housing, and sustainability that about 80% of what we do is the core services, working with customers on various projects. We're really here to talk about the special projects and initiatives, the 20%, but by way of background, these core service work, the core service work, these are the things that happen on a pretty daily basis, often behind the scenes, working with customers on building permits, on-site reviews, historic preservation, capital improvements. One of the big projects coming up this year that is probably important for you to be aware of is the EnerGov replacement. That's going to replace our, our system for cataloging all the projects that come through, and it will be a huge improvement for services, but it is something that's going to take quite a bit of staff time. So these are some of the things that many of our staff do on a daily basis. Again, we're really here more to talk about this 20% that we do that originate out of your council work plan priorities, and that come out of, in many cases, the comprehensive plan and our housing action plan as well. So by way of reminder, I think Jim did a nice introduction to say that we just came out of two years of intensive engagement with you all, with the community, and our work plan for 2018 and 2019 is a bit unique in that respect because we have that perspective from the community that's very fresh in terms of some policy guidance, and where, where we should be focusing our efforts, as well as an action plan that started to identify some of the items to get to work on implementing the plan. So that's certainly the backdrop of that, and you now have your newly minted version of the plan itself that we've provided to you this evening. So I'll spend just a couple of minutes going through the items that we had anticipated would be in our work for this year and next year. This list, I should say, does not yet reflect what we saw from you in your responses. We'll get to that a bit later in the, in the presentation, but I wanted to just take a minute or so to run through these projects. So the first item, A, up there, the Central Broadway projects, the area plan items for both the Civic Area East Bookend, and then the Alpine-Balsam former hospital, hospital site that we're doing planning on. You will have a large study session next week. There's a team of people that's from many departments of the city. It's quite an interdepartmental project, and you're going to hear a lot about that next week, so we won't spend much time on that this evening. Suffice to say that we have about two or three of our long-range planners who are dedicated, you know, almost full-time, working on aspects of this project, as well as those other partners in different departments and aspects of the city. The next item that you see on the list, item B, the Land Use Code Amendments to Address Building Height, and that's something I'll actually touch on just a bit in the next slide to update you on what's been happening with that. We understand that you have some interest in potentially looking at that project and making some adjustments, so I'll get to that. But this is one that has currently one staff from Long Range Planning and a staff from current, from Development Review, who are teamed together with Communications and others to work on code change projects, code change projects, just to give you a sense of the kind of engagement and effort. The third item on the list, the land use, another land use code item, and this was something that came up fairly frequently in the council responses, the interest in looking at the regulations around enhanced community benefit, and there's some information in your memo and packet about what we, as a city, currently require on the part of developers to provide various benefits, whether it be affordable housing, or open space, or street dedications. So we would be working on code amendments to address additional enhanced benefits that might be required through the site review, and there's a new policy in the comprehensive plan, Policy 1.11, that identifies a whole array of potential benefits that Planning Board in particular had quite a lot of conversation about. Council had some conversation, we got a lot of input from the community. So that's one we did anticipate getting to work on this year, once we were completed with the building height code items, but that's something that could be accelerated potentially in the timeframe. CU South, our support in the planning side of things at this point is really more to support a team that, at this point in time, is more focused on South Boulder Creek flood mitigation analysis and work, but we are working with that team to start to gear up to coordinate on what a future annexation agreement might be, building on, of course, all the work that was done extensively last year around the comprehensive plan guiding principles, land use categories, and so on. So that's the backdrop for that project. So at least for the first part of the year, the planning effort in this is a little bit less so than in utilities and other departments, but depending on how those analyses play out, then we would get more involved later in the year in this one. And then last but not least, in 2018, we had anticipated starting to do some scoping around this project that was identified as part of the comprehensive plan, to do a neighborhood plan residential infill pilot project. That was really a project that was conceived of for the purpose of addressing some of the neighborhood character issues, some of the infill, some of the issues we had been hearing around large homes and lots, subdivisions, and so forth, some of the things that I think you identified as well. And it would be a self-selecting group or neighborhood that would work with the city and come through a process to meet certain criteria and so on. Now, this is one that could be potentially repurposed, I think, as we talk to you about some of your objectives as we move forward. I'll just very quickly touch on where we are with the height regulation project, and I think you're all quite familiar with it, but this is the project that came out of the ordinance that was approved, and that is, at this point, set to expire in July, that limits where in the community, and you can see on the map, the hatched areas where a developer would be eligible to ask for a building that's higher than 35 feet and up to 55 feet to the city charter limit in exchange for providing affordable housing and benefits. And this is one that we can talk about in terms of some options for how to carry on with this project, as well as what we've heard so far in the process. But we have, you know, we've heard some interesting things from the focus groups, focusing on design, and potentially some interest in adjusting some of the affordable housing provisions tied to that, but, so we can come back to that.
Leslie, clarify what you were saying before. My understanding is that currently, can you go back a slide?
Sure.
That those areas that you showed can ask for heights up to 55 feet?
That's correct.
But you could also ask for them if you provided over 40% or more affordable housing? And those are two separate categories?
That's correct. Yes. Yeah. Okay, so I'll pass the baton to Kurt to walk through the housing items now.
Good evening again. Kurt Fernhopper, Deputy Director of Housing. So again, this is the, sort of the top of the iceberg, and these are the things that we have currently on our work plan now for 2017. The items that have an asterisk, or are in the light green, are ones that will take a little more staff effort than, than the others, but I'm going to go through them over the next few slides here. The lined items in red, I have specific slides for, so I won't go through them now. So the 30th and Pearl redevelopment, we're currently, it's actually a very high level of staff effort over this past two quarters and this quarter, and then as it goes to city council in, in March, then it will actually reduce, but there's a lot of coordination between different departments within the city in developing the joint development agreement with the developer on this. The Inclusionary Housing Program, you're aware that that came into place the first week in November 2017. However, there's design criteria, concept that was approved as part of that, which we're working on, which will come in front of city council prior to July as well.
Wait, can you, what did you just say? What's going to come before us?
So there's a design criteria that we're putting forward for use-by-right projects that do affordable housing, so a staff design criteria that would be developed for that.
Where is that? That's just part of D.
And did you say you'd be bringing those to us for approval? Or did, are you just doing the-
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
So the affordable housing community benefits, so that's, so we're working with Leslie's team on the, on the height as well, and working on the, sort of the component, or amount, or percentage of affordable housing that would be part of that. Affordable commercial space, that's something that sort of came onto our work plan somewhat unexpectedly last year. It sort of grew legs of its own. There was two projects that prompted that. One was the 30th and Pearl project, where city council was really, we were hearing a lot from the community about that, and city council directed us to look at creating affordable housing, permanent affordable housing on that site. Another project, Zero Diagonal, it was discussed on that project as well. That was a little bit too far along to be able to implement a program that we hadn't quite envisioned yet. So we're currently working on a pilot of affordable commercial space, and working with Economic Vitality on that project. And that will be coming to the city council in June. The middle-income homebuyers assistance pilot, I think we know a little bit more about the scoping of that after meeting with, with Sam and Bob, but that's a project that we anticipate really getting going after we're able to close out the ADU ordinance. That's how we sort of have had it scheduled. The regional housing strategy implementation, that, that project also sort of grew onto our work plan last year. As you know, the, the strategy was approved by yourselves in October. It's been approved by every city's single council in the region except for, I think it's Superior at this point. But now it's actually going to turn into implementation and work items that come out of that, and we're going to have regional work teams that are actually working on different activities. So it really changes in its, in its scope in 2018, and there'll be a larger variety of staff that will be working on that project. The homeless strategy implementation, that again is another one that sort of grew onto our work plan last year, when you approved the, the homeless strategy, which had a very important housing component in it. So we've really been working on the permanent supportive housing and the voucher program around that, and that will continue because we, we have targets every year for that. The fair housing assessment is something that's done every five years. It's required by HUD, and this year, in a, sort of a cost-saving approach, and for other reasons- reasons, we've actually partnered with the City of Denver, City of Aurora, and the City of Broomfield, and we're actually doing that together. We have an affordable housing study session coming up in February where we'll actually be presenting some of that fair housing assessment work.
Kurt?
Yes?
Kurt, would you just explain what that fair housing assessment is? Sorry.
Would you explain, please, what that fair housing assessment is?
Yeah, it's really a, it's, first of all, it's a survey in the community, looking at how fair housing either impacts or doesn't impact people within the community. It's also looking at things like policies and that sort of thing in the different municipalities to see how that matches up to the fair housing.
So I suppose it's fair housing itself that I'm asking about?
What does it mean, fair?
What does fair, fair housing, is it like fair weather, or is it like, I know this is just a question?
Yeah, it's, I mean, generally speaking, it's about discrimination. It came out of the 1960s, sort of the civil rights movement. It came out of that and then became part of HUD and some of their requirements, ensuring that affordable housing programs and approaches
Are non-discriminatory.
Are non-discriminatory in how they're developed, and how the people are selected, and how they're actually worked within the community.
So is it an assessment of how we're fulfilling the requirements of the Fair Housing Act?
That's correct.
Thank you, that's helpful. It's not a very expeditious term, fair housing.
I didn't come up with it.
I know you didn't, I know you didn't, but thank you for the explanation.
So then the fee waivers and expedited review, and tiny homes, micro units, those were sort of on the list last year, but we were never able to get them onto our work plan, so they're still sort of sitting in limbo.
Can I ask a question? Fee waivers and expedited review, I totally get. What's the tiny homes and micro units one?
So that would really be regulations, code things, zoning, looking at, I mean, currently tiny homes really can't be used in the city of Boulder. There's certain code and zoning requirements that would have to be adjusted for that to happen.
Yeah. Can I ask you about micro units?
Yes.
Would that, if a developer came in and said, I want to build, you know, a 300-square-foot apartment, or, you know, something like that, that doesn't take a lot of work, does it? I mean?
So 300, they would actually be okay. If they start getting less than that, they start running into code issues, and there's ADA requirements, there's minimum sizes of, you know, bedrooms and that sort of thing in our current code. So we would have to revisit our code issues to understand. And I think there is more, there is going to be more pressure around micro units, and it may be something that we want to look at.
Okay, thank you.
So the Housing Advisory Board, just a little bit of an update. So on December 5th, Council asked me to expedite the schedule that we had on that project. We've had one of the two public meetings, one on December 19th, there's another one next week. We're going to be coming to you on January 23rd with a study session to really look at the purpose, functions, and composition of that, and we're going to be reflecting back what we've heard from you and from the input that we've received. As well, we'll be bringing you an ordinance on that day as well, for you to give your feedback on. As you would have seen in the communication, I think it went out today or yesterday around the boards and commissions, we're also looking for people who are interested in the Housing Advisory Board.
Thank you for doing that, so thank you.
Sure.
For expediting that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Expediently.
So the ADU, we thought we'd give you a little update on that. There's been certainly a lot of conversations in the community around that, as you've seen. So that was on the 2017 Council Retreat Priority. Didn't really make it on as early in the year as I would have anticipated. On August 22nd, we had our first study session with City Council around that. And after that, we put a public engagement process in place around that. We've had, I must say, very good participation from the community, so we had 190 people at our two public meetings. We've had over 250 ADU stories. Those ADU stories represent people who either live in ADUs, own ADUs, or next door to ADUs. We sent postcards out to people who live on the same street or in the same area as ADUs, asking what the impacts has been. I was very pleased this week that we received the information back from a survey. We surveyed every single ADU owner in the city. 70% of them responded to the survey. And so we're getting very good feedback on, you know, how many cars do they have, how much do they rent them for, you know, what do the people do, what kind of challenges do they have, you know, how was the city process in getting the ADUs? Very valuable information that I think will help our conversation around that. So we're continuing to gather data around that, and I think that's scheduled in February to come to you as a study session as well.
Kurt, can?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Can I just ask a question on the 190 people that attended? Do you guys know how many out of those people were owners of ADUs versus non-owners?
We don't, because we simply, you know, we didn't, we didn't survey the people who came.
Okay.
So we really wouldn't, I mean, we could probably make some guesses, but they, it certainly wouldn't be statistically correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we, as part of this process, looking at both, you know, we have ADUs and OAUs, are we looking at both of those together?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So the last one that I'll go over that's a very intense project for staff is the Ponderosa Preservation Project. And in August 2017, you remember, we purchased that property. In the following month, we had an election within the community where they elected seven representatives that represented different blocks within the community to be on a leadership committee. That committee meets on a monthly basis. We've had a resiliency design workshop where we worked at, we looked at many issues, not just, you know, building issues, but really visioning, what's the vision for that community in the future to be more resilient and sustainable? We looked at the social assets, the, really, the social challenges within the site, and we had about 70 professionals that participated in that, many from around the country. And we also had about 25 residents that participated in that as well. I think it was very successful. Now, over the next 18 months, we'll be going through the annexation process, you know, site plans and infrastructure designs, and really working holistically on the site of what it could look like in the future.
Kurt, remind me, how many people live there?
There are 68 mobile homes. I think there's about 190 individuals that live there.
Okay, so we'll shift gears back to the planning side of the House now and talk a little bit about some of the potential modifications that we could make to the work plan. And there are some items up on the list here that, these are the things that, depending on the magnitude we think we can do with our current staffing and resources, and there are some of these we'd like to talk with you a little bit more in terms of intended hopes, visions, outcomes around them. But the first item on the list is, we saw a fair amount of interest in revisiting the commercial linkage fee work that was done last year, and that's something that, and Chris Messjuck's here, if we have particular questions around that, but that's something that we could look at scheduling with you all in the earlier part of the year if there's interest in doing that. The second item on the list, in the enhanced community benefit, the site review criteria, and actually, potentially some other code changes. As we speak right now, Planning Board is having a conversation over at the Senior Center about priorities for other land use code amendments, and you'll be receiving an information packet next week, or I guess the week after, before your retreat, with their input around some priorities, and they've identified some other things around use tables and so on. But in essence, we could shift gears, and in place of working on the building height regulation project, in essence, by either removing the ordinance expiration date or extending the period of time to allow for a broader spectrum of regulatory topics that we could address around that. That would be something that would have a similar staffing and resource implication. It would be a longer duration project because it's more complex, so we wouldn't be done by July. It would probably be more like through early 2019 to complete that work, but that is something that we could look at making some shifts within the work plan if that would be of interest. The third item, sub-community planning and scoping, and I actually have a slide that follows this that talks a little bit about sub-community planning and how we generally approach it, but I think this is an area certainly that a number of you expressed some interest in, but kind of varying degrees of how that might get approached, and so I think we'd like to understand better from you what your aspirations and intentions are around outcomes for that process. There was a lot of comments, I think, that you provided about making it a more routine, regular process, so I think we'd like to understand what the scheduling and the prioritization and so on might look like around that, where we start, how we would focus on that. That may be something, as I alluded to earlier, that we could look at doing in place of what we had anticipated gearing up for the pilot project or more of a neighborhood focus. Some of the issues that you may be interested in addressing may filter through into some of that as well. I think we'd like to talk with you a little bit more about some of your interests around the large lots, small home policy subdivision. There was a flavoring of different comments to that effect in some of your feedback, and we'd be interested to know if that's really more of a planning policy type of issue, or something that we could be addressing through some code changes. And that may happen as part of the second item conceivably, if it's more of a code change type of item. There may be other things that we missed or that you'd like to discuss with us as well, but those are the things that we saw, at least in your early input, as some things that we could start to look at adjusting in our work plan as we move forward. And then I did promise that we'd just talk a little bit about sub-community planning, but I think maybe, given where we are in our presentation overall, this might be something that we could come back to if you want to talk about it. We certainly have definitions in the comprehensive plan and criteria that guide how we do this. That's where the map lives in terms of defining our sub-communities. We did a fair amount of work in the comprehensive plan, actually, to create some fact sheets and some background information, and look at projections and other data and information about the different sub-communities. So we've got some pretty good background information to help us with some assessments and understanding of where needs may exist. And as I mentioned, I think it'd be helpful to talk with you more about your keenest interests around this area of planning. So I think that brings us really to next steps and some continued discussion with you all about any questions you may have for us, or ideas you'd like to explore, or more information that you'd like us to get prior to your retreat, so you can have a really good conversation then. And I think, at this point, we'll open it up to you all for questions and comments. Thank you very much.
Can you go back to the slide a couple?
Whoops, wrong way. Those are back slides, okay.
Yeah.
This one, yeah.
Okay. And I just, well, we have a process question, but I also have a question about something that's not on that list.
Sure.
And that's simply, we had talked about, we teed up in the Boulder Valley Comp Plan about maybe addressing mixed use in the commercial industrial zones and changing some of that?
Yeah.
Is that, I didn't see you cover that, is that because it's just not on, well, anyhow, can you?
Yeah, really good question. So the reason it's not on these lists or in the slides, it actually is on this list that you got in your packet and that you have before you. It's really something that is anticipated a little bit later on because of these other items that are at the top of the list. So if you look down toward the bottom, the Boulder Valley Regional Center land use code amendments and some of the industrial code amendments, Boulder Valley Regional Center really gets at some of the 28th Street corridor code amendment changes. And then if there are other commercial or mixed-use areas, some of those fall into the other area planning or other code amendment items that actually aren't on this list, but that are in the comprehensive plan, action plan. So some of those items, when we had the action plan conversation, ended up in the near or longer-term implementation list, so our thought is, we'll get to them within the 10 years for sure, hopefully much sooner than that, but probably not this year or next year.
Yeah, did you have a question on that?
Yeah, but.
Okay, go ahead.
College.
So just calling them industrial lands makes me a little bit nervous, because we do need those industrial sites and things like that. But I am very much in favor of looking at our commercial properties and seeing what we can do to change those to residential. And I don't know where that would happen necessarily, or maybe that's what you just answered, and?
Yeah, I think there are a variety of ways that could happen. Some of it is through some of the code changes that we've talked about that may emerge through even sub-community planning. I think if we talk about sub-community planning as a process that could result in not only some policy changes for land use, but potentially some regulatory changes, that may be one way of coming at that. But more specifically, the comprehensive plan did identify both the Boulder Valley Regional Center, which is, of course, a large area in the center part of the community where there's a lot of commercial, non-residential potential, as well as, and saying industrial is a little bit of an oversimplification, but the east side areas where we have the business parks and
Right. And that's industrial, that's called industrial?
It's light, it's zoned light industrial. It's addressed through our standards, and we have, we have different standards that apply. There's some residential and industrial standards that we had identified through the comprehensive plan as potentially modifying to allow for some greater mix of uses, but being very cautious about how we would move forward with those businesses that are there, as you had identified.
So, you know, I guess we're basically looking at where we might put housing or residential. And is there a way to?
Or mixed use.
Or mixed use, well, I mean, I mean this all with mixed use, but is there a way to combine, like, the industrial, so that we don't miss something, or that, you know, we're looking at the flat, or I'm just, we're not really looking at flatiron, but it's one thing you might want to look at? And some of our 28th Street corridor where there's commercial, and putting, looking at redevelopment potential, and could we do those at the same time, or is that just too much?
Well, we, like I said, we had originally anticipated that those would be something that we would gear up on next year, probably, not this year, just because of what's currently on the plate. I think it really depends on what ends up on the list, and, you know, if that were to take place of, say, some of the work around community benefits, or how it relates to sub-community planning, or some of the other things. We can't do it all. I think if something big goes on the list, something big might need to come off the list, for sure, but I think we could certainly continue to talk about what are those higher priority outcomes that you're hoping to achieve in the next couple of years.
Yeah, and I could see it coming through sub-community planning very easily, and I assume we're going to talk about that. I assume we're going to talk about that.
Okay.
Just a quick, just to insert, just you say BDRC, but that in the Comp Plan Action Plan included the 28th, 30th Street Commercial Corridor to the north of that as well.
So that's on those two. Okay, so we need to figure out our process, but Sam's been waiting patiently.
Is this on the same thing?
Yeah, kinda.
Go ahead.
Kinda.
Thank you.
Well, my point was, or question point, I guess, really, was going to be kind of the same as Lisa, that some of this could be, it's possible that, say, for example, we chose the East Boulder sub-community, because we have sub-communities defined, and that encompassed, you know, area plan for 55th and Arapahoe, and the industrial lands, and some of these other bits and pieces that are in here. Could they be addressed as part of a sub-community plan? So it's possible that you could embed some of these within...
Yeah, I think conceivably so. I mean, a few of you noted the interest in looking at the North Central, and looking at you, Sam, and I think maybe Zan noted that as well, is looking at that because we're concurrently working on Alpine Balsam, and there's some synergy potentially with that. But I think if council as a whole wanted to talk about, you know, how do we prioritize those, and where do we focus our efforts, that it could be that that would be an area of interest that you'd start to look at.
Thank you, that was all ahead.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure I understood what you said Planning Board was talking about tonight.
Oh, sure.
What is Planning Board talking about tonight?
So Planning Board got a list of code change items that they, I think when you had your study session back in August, you had asked us to bring forward to you in the form of an information packet, all the other code change items that were teed up and potentially going to make their way through the process and to you at some point in the next couple of years. So they are having that discussion tonight as we speak. They got a short memo and a list of about 10 or 11 items, and then you'll see it in an information packet in a couple of weeks. Some of them overlap with what you're already seeing here. Building height item is on the list, ADUs is on the list. There's some things that you aren't seeing here, like parking code changes that came out of work from the Amps project and the Transportation Master Plan, and a few other things like that, that, some changes around some of the open space requirements to accommodate more private outdoor space, and other site review criteria aspects. And so you'll see that, as I said, on the 16th as part of an information packet prior to your retreat, so that if you want to add anything or change anything, but that should also synchronize with this work.
Okay, so one of the priorities I had was site plan review reform, so site plan criteria review, basically. Would you consider that embedded in what you just described? And so we should review that to make sure it's extensive?
Yeah, it's part of that list, and there's really a fair amount of overlap with the community benefit topics, so we'd probably work on those simultaneously.
Okay, and what about use table review?
Use table review, I think, is something that we understand is needing probably a bit more definition, and that, I suspect Planning Board's having some conversation about that. It was in their letter to you, to you all, as well, as something that they are interested in looking at. And depending on the magnitude, again, of how much changes in the use table, there's interest in looking at, and whether it's more housekeeping adjustments to be kind of current with what's happening out there. I mean, you're, having sat on Planning Board, are probably aware that some of our use definitions are a bit archaic and don't quite match what we see happening, or what we see as being requested. And so there, it could be as simple as more of a housekeeping cleanup, and it could be more complex to actually get at changing intended outcomes in different zoning districts around mixes of uses and that kind of thing. And so depending on where we fall on that spectrum, it's, that will drive the kind of effort that we need to put in the project.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, just from a process point of view, can we just, Steph asked for a bit more input on several of these, let's at least make sure we do that. Is that fair enough?
Yeah.
Okay, so did you want us to go through each one, or just a couple of these where there's a question?
I think it's up to you. If you, if it's helpful to go through them independently, that could be helpful to us. I think we're looking for, again, general feedback tonight. Are we heading in the right direction? Are we getting you the information you need for January 20th for your broader discussion? We don't need decisions tonight, but I think it'd be very helpful if we could get a flavor from you about, are these the right items, are things missing? Would you like to see some things reorganized here? So whatever works better for you to get...
Well, let's see if we can't, like, I have a question on number one, for example. Can we just go through the list?
Yeah, I'd like to go through the list, that's what I'd suggest. I'd also say, I think a straw poll might be helpful. I mean, I know not all members are here tonight, it's not making a decision, but it's going to indicate generally how do people feel about, would you like this one on the list and high or not?
But we can totally do that, my hesitation is we're missing two people. We did all submit stuff, so I guess, I don't want to hear everybody's opinions on everything, just because, well, I meant, that's what we're going to do, we're going to spend a weekend doing that. So if, I guess, so let's think about the, all right, if we can do that easily, if it's really a straw poll, but, okay, on the first one, no, yes?
Well, I feel like a straw poll is not what we're scoped for tonight. I mean, I think making sure that we've got the right list, that we clarify how items on this list should be presented at the retreat, but the retreat is where we have the full discussion of how we want our work plan to look like this year, and I think that's where that, and of course, we're missing a couple of people, so.
Right, and I agree with that. This is a study session, and as you know, I always bring up, I do not like voting at all, and we shouldn't be voting. And so I think we need to just be clear to staff in terms of...
Right, but this isn't a study session, this matters.
I guess so, yeah, but we're not vote, sorry.
Right, fair enough, okay.
I wish you was.
All right, so on commercial linkage fees, I guess one question I have is, some people, I guess myself included, put it, and I guess Sam actually started this, I'll just, but anyhow, the notion that it could be teed off the existing study and done relatively quickly, and I guess that may, I guess, is a question back to you guys.
I think that's correct, and I'll call Chris Messchuck up, because he's the resident expert in that.
Hi, Chris Messchuck. Yeah, the current study that was done by the consultants, Kaiser Marshon Associates, that study is still fresh enough that we could use it, and we could go back to the options that were developed as a part of the project, if you wanted to revisit the fee levels. It's still, we could pick that up and run with it.
Okay, so, yeah.
Just on the same thing, does it have a time limit, that particular study?
It doesn't necessarily have a time limit, it's more the analysis, and there's a certain point where you're going, you'd want to rerun that analysis, because things have changed, whether it's in the costs of development, or in what current development is costing. We believe that we're still close enough to that analysis, that those numbers are still valid, and we could still use it for making good decisions.
Great, thank you.
So Chris, would it be as simple as scheduling it for a meeting, or, and I guess that's probably up to council, to having, holding a study session first, and then having it go to a meeting? I mean, how, how simple could it get?
Sure. We think it would be helpful to have a study session, or some sort of a conversation, to hear some feedback, if you'd like to revise what the fee levels are, to be able to know what fee levels to put in a potential ordinance change, or to hear additional feedback would be probably the most helpful, is to start with a study session conversation, and if you have any thoughts on the information that you're looking for in that study session, obviously that feedback is helpful, so that we focus on the right information, but that way we dig up the previous analysis and bring you what would be helpful for your conversation.
Thank you.
My thought on that was, with three new council members, that we should have a study session, just so everyone is kind of working from the same information at the same level. So that was my thought, was one study session and one, or one...
Public hearing, right?
Public hearing.
Okay, so that's matching up. All right, anything else on that one?
No, I'm glad we're doing it.
We talked a little bit about this, and if I understand correctly, we could have a more, a fuller community benefit conversation, that got at affordable housing, but could also include other things.
Correct.
And that that would take about a year-ish.
Right, and that would be probably in place of some of the code work that we're currently doing around the height ordinance item, either expanding the scope of the timeframe of that, so that we could do these items as well, or looking to redefine that a bit, but we probably can't do both of those at the same time.
So the part where you extend the moratorium date, like, isn't that pretty simple?
So there's a few different options around that. You could just basically remove the expiration date and leave in place the standards as they exist now, and you had some discussion around that last year as a council, Planning Board, and the decision at the time was to put a 15-month period expiration date in place, so that we could go do more analysis and work, and then bring back potentially some revisions. So one option would be just to say, remove the expiration date. Another option would be to extend the expiration date, so that we could broaden the scope of work around it, to address not only refinements around where and how we address some of the height modification issues, but how we address some of the community benefit issues that may be connected with that, and if there are other items that could be bundled in as part of the code changes, then we could do that. So I think those are a couple of options. Certainly if you remove the expiration date, that doesn't preclude you from going back later into the code and deciding that you want to amend certain sections of that code as to how they apply to building heights or site reviews, so that I think that, you know, that that's, you could still make amendments at some point in time. So I think there's some different options to approach that. We have been getting, I think, some helpful input and feedback from focus groups and community members so far, and there's a fair amount of interest in still addressing some of the issues around design, and particularly around the affordable housing provisions that are tied to that, just to make sure we've got it exactly right, because there wasn't a lot of analysis that went into it several years back, and I think we have an opportunity maybe now to do some refinement around that. But that, I think we look to you for some guidance about what your priorities are and how you'd like to approach it.
I'd just like to remind us that Planning Board, a subcommittee of Planning Board, put together kind of a menu of criteria for enhanced community benefit, and how that can be looked at. So it feels to me like we've got some work that's pretty recent, that can be used to underpin this, and so I guess my thought is, I am happy to see this up here the way it is. I would remove the expiration date for the height ordinance, and we can always come back and just take it off the books or change it when the time comes. But that allows staff the time needed to do a thorough job with Planning Board, to get us some good recommendations.
Karen?
So, yeah, I wouldn't just take the expiration date off, but I think we can have a full discussion at the retreat about exactly what this might look like.
Okay, so, and at the retreat, we'll talk about that, and then I think we want to clarify, yes, with a little more, what the fuller conversation looks like.
Yeah, and if there are any other code items that might get...
And we will have Planning Board's thoughts.
Planning Board will no doubt have some very helpful input on this as well.
Mary.
So one of the, the things I put on my list of priorities was to extend the height moratorium, but I think removing the expiration date would work just the same, and then release areas from the height, from the height moratorium, as the sub-community plans are complete. That was what I had suggested, so, so that's clearly my preference, so that's something for us to consider at the retreat.
All right, anything else on two?
Okay.
Three.
I have a question just to start with. So could you speak to this neighborhood plan and infill pilot? It seems to me that with sub-community planning, we could do neighborhood plans within that sub-community, and then this idea of a neighborhood self-selecting itself, and wanting to do some kind of a pilot project, does that really conflict so much with the sub-community planning? I'm trying to just get a grasp of how much work that would involve if a neighborhood came forward and said, we would like to really try something a little bit differently, and we're all okay with it.
Yeah, probably the potential key difference there is that the way the neighborhood plan pilot was identified as a project would, in essence, be a selection process, as you identified where we'd identify with you and the community, the criteria, and then a group or a neighborhood would apply, and then we would start working with them. And so where this might not quite synchronize exactly is if the sub-communities that you prioritize aren't the ones that we're seeing, groups that are interested in doing something. If, for instance, you were to pick one, and, you know, on the east side, and we heard from the north side, you know, group in the north side that they want to do some work, that's where they might not synchronize very well. But I think some of the issues that we're hearing about in neighborhoods, and around some of the regulatory issues, or some of the character issues, may be really quite similar, and could be dealt with through either format.
So my, I have two more questions. So my second question is if we looked at sub-community planning in a kind of a, not as detailed as we went into in North Boulder, but we looked at, you know, areas of change, areas, not a lot of change, and we look at form, our form-based code, and bulk and density, and we could maybe identify, kind of do sub-community planning light, and at least get these basic elements into, into different sub-community areas. And so this kind of goes to my third, so, could we do something like that? Or, I mean, we did try to do housing light, it didn't work.
Yes, we've talked about the idea of plan light in the past, and somehow they always end up ballooning to include a lot of things. But I think the way we interpret that terminology in this case is that it would be a plan that would be narrowly focused around land use issues only, where we wouldn't be focusing on streetscapes, and arts and culture, and, you know, you name it, all the other service types of things. It would be really a way of getting at some of these very particular land use issues, and that the outcome then would be some policy changes that relate to that, and maybe some regulatory changes that relate to that. I think where, if we were to do a sub-community plan, like the North Boulder Subcommunity Plan, that's a 35, 40-page document, it covers lots and lots of topics, it included lots and lots of engagement around all those topics, and multi-departments at the city and everything, that is not a light effort.
Right, and I'm looking at the light, because I think there's a lot of different places in the city that we do have to address, and from my perspective, the land use changes or the land use regulations or policies, that's what really, I think, sometimes concerns people with respect to predictability in terms of what's going to happen in their neighborhood. And I think if we could do kind of a low-level, that kind of sub-community planning focused on land use, I think that might be something that we would want to consider.
Yeah.
And then my third question, and it's kind of related to this, is that on our work plan, and I know you guys aren't transportation, but we have the East Arapaho, and it's very difficult for me to go forward with East Arapaho transportation thing without any land use, and so, and like on Arapaho, you have, you're right at the, at the contact between two sub-communities, and so somehow you need to overlap that, so that, you know, that corridor, it gets at least a basic understanding of what are the forms and the densities and the bulk that are going to be, and the uses, kind of, I guess that would be addressed in the form, but, would be on Arapaho, and I, I'm just very uncomfortable moving forward with the East Arapaho Transportation Master Plan, or whatever it's called, without having some land use in place for the adjacent street.
Okay, Sam?
So Lisa, I liked most of what you said there in the first... So Lisa, I liked most of what you said there in the first part about form and bulk being, you know, one of the big functions that you get settled. And then Planning Board can work over the design element issues, right? Because a lot of times, they're spending a lot of project discussion on form and bulk, and if people know what to expect in the areas around, there may be a lot less objection to form and bulk when the project comes in. The thing I would add, though, is I think there's an opportunity to do neighborhood engagement at the same time.
Absolutely.
So when you identify the areas of change, that's where you're going to focus your form and bulk work, but you can also talk about things like, do you or do you not want infill changes, ADUs, how is the policy working here in this typology for ADUs? How about lot subdivision, right? So some of these things that would be hard to take on citywide would be easier to take on in smaller areas. So I wouldn't want to leave aside the work done in the residential areas, just focusing on the commercial areas.
Yeah, if I can just respond, I totally agree with you, and the reason why I'm not using the term "sub-area" because that usually focuses to me on just one specific transportation corridor and leaves out the neighbors. And I think it's critical, and that's why subcommunity planning is so important, it has to include the residents that live around. So I agree with you, Sam.
I just wanted to follow up with one. Okay, do you have?
Well, it's just that I feel like, under this heading, a lot of people are talking about a lot of different things, and I guess my hope is that we can clarify, hey, yeah, let's do this north-central thing, and figure it out, and get some stuff done that can be used, a template that you use elsewhere. Or anyhow, I do think we need to get a lot more specific, I mean, we do that at the retreat, about what the heck we mean by this and what would actually happen. And I guess, so I'll just throw that out there, that I want us to get a lot more specific. I'm not sure, when you talk, and you talk, you're saying the same things about a plan, or like, which one would we start with, you know? So anyhow, I'll just encourage us to figure out those details, and whether we are in agreement about north-central, for example, or...
There's still the discussion of, well, could we do multiple, and not with our current staffing levels, but could we get, you know, some consultants to come in and help us? Or, I don't know, but, you know, something that's not such a heavy lift, but could be happening at some different places in the community. I mean, we're talking, and I'm not trying to push East Boulder necessarily, but we're going to put in a pretty giant highway, it's already a highway, in Arapahoe, and we don't have any information in terms of what is going on beside the hospital and some sites on the site. And so, and we're getting proposals that are coming forward, and they're just coming out with no context. So that's a concern.
So that's something we're going to try to nail down at the retreat, is a little more flesh on that, I guess. And I think also this notion of, I don't know, well, there are some things we, you just mentioned that, well, some things don't work citywide, and some things do. I guess, I think we want to have some clarity around, like, so far on the list, ADUs are still there. And so, anyhow, but I hear people talking, well, maybe we should just do them in a neighborhood versus look at the policy citywide. I have some thoughts on that. I think there's some things that need to be done citywide. But anyhow, so that's another point of clarity we need to do, to cover at the retreat, because people have been talking about things both ways.
Just a thought on that, and I'm going to address number four here a little bit in this thought, which is that I think that there's a role for citywide changes, and that's to maybe change the floor. If we decide, well, gosh, we have, we've set a really low floor, and so you really can't do very many ADUs, or you can't divide large lots at all. And so we could reset that floor to a different level and say, well, this is one that works for pretty much anywhere, because we feel like we should get a little bit more of ADUs, or we should allow some large lot subdivision. But then maybe we could look at opportunities within subcommunities for individual areas, say, well, yeah, okay, you've got this floor here, but actually, we love this idea, and we'd like to see some more of it in our neighborhood, and so you could set it up here. So this is just a thought of a way to potentially approach that. So I wouldn't want to see, for example, the idea of subdivisions to rest solely with subcommunity plans.
Right.
So I think it's going to take us a long time to get through these things. I absolutely support the effort. I'm glad we're moving forward on it. But in the meantime, we're getting, like in North Boulder, we're getting these smaller homes scraped, and we're getting the really big ones put on. And so I would not want to wait to finish all of our subcommunity plans to address that throughout the city.
We can't. They won't be left. Okay, Mary.
Aaron, I like your idea of resetting the floor, and that kind of, I'm going to introduce another thought that I had, which kind of takes a lot of pieces that we've been talking about and projects that are being worked on. So the idea, and I asked a question about whether or not we had, we are, with the ADUs, are we considering both the ADUs and the OAUs within that? And one of the things that we might consider at the retreat would be to separate out the ADUs, that is, the units that are contained within a house, separate that out from the detached accessory units. And my thinking around that is, well, right now, you can have two roomers in, anywhere in the city. And so there's not a whole lot of difference between that and having an ADU. And so, you know, that's maybe shifting the floor a little bit. So maybe we could talk about that at the retreat. But I, in decoupling that from the OAU conversation, then the OAU conversation could be covered within the neighborhood pilot, as part of the neighborhood pilot. It could be talked about as part of the lot subdivisions. So there's ways, different ways that you could look at then the OAU piece of it by decoupling it. So that's just an idea I wanted to put out there for you all to think about prior to the retreat.
Talk about it.
Okay, anything else on four? I mean, I, this notion of the floor and ceiling, or the floor and folks, different parts of the city, maybe go further. I had, anyhow, I totally agree with that. And I think that the subdivision, large lot subdivision is a perfect example of where we should get on with that.
Yeah, and we need to do it fast.
So, I mean, I agree with you, Aaron. The vision I have for subcommunity planning absolutely doesn't stop you from doing anything citywide. So I think there are parts of ADU policy that are appropriate to change citywide, and I think there are parts that are going to be much more context-sensitive in a subcommunity plan. So you can make some changes. I wouldn't necessarily want to stop the ADU project that's going on now. We might want to check the priority against these other things. But at the same time, I think when you do get to subcommunity plans, there are opportunities to make tweaks to the citywide policies.
Okay, yep.
I just have a question on the subdividing of lots. So let's say I want to live in high density, so I go and either buy a condo or I rent an apartment. Or if I want to live in something that's low density, and I want free space and room to breathe, I go probably look in North Boulder at the moment, or East Boulder. How much are we talking about with subdivi, I'm not looking to have massive houses built by any means, but if, let's say for right now, I live in North Boulder, and they have some pretty gorgeous large yards, and that's what I bought into, and now it's getting subdivided and more houses are being built, and hence, density is increasing, but that's not what I purchased into. I mean, how are we looking at this? I'm just asking, because as a homeowner, I would be frustrated.
Well, and the thing, I think that what we're seeing is a lot of, you might have bought into small houses, and they're getting scraped, and mansions are being built. So, and that's being driven by the fact that you don't have better options to subdivide the lot and build some smaller stuff. And so I think one of the questions is, do we incentivize, do we, A, allow it, B, do we want to incentivize it? Because there's nothing efficient about mansions in terms of a land use or housing policy. And so, but that's what we're getting. So what do we do about that? And so I don't necessarily have the answer to your thing, but I do think what we're getting is definitely what we don't want.
Right. And if I can just add, there's also tax implications. So you move into your nice lot on north, in North Boulder, and you have a modest-sized house, and then all these houses that are also modest-sized are now getting scraped, and they go from 1,100 square feet now to 7,000 square feet. The tax implications for those are incredible. And so those people who thought, oh, this is a nice place, I can age in place, will not be able to do that. So there's significant policy implications if we stay with large lots and don't even think about it, or if we move forward and try to change some things.
But there's trade-offs.
There's trade-offs.
There's trade-offs to everything.
Yeah, I mean, just to be clear, I'm not supporting building McMansions by any means here. I'm just trying to say, let's, you know, if everyone in North Boulder starts subdividing a lot, then you've now changed the density of an entire area that that's maybe not what people purchased into, even if the houses are still being built small.
People are getting displaced because...
Right. So that's a question that would need to be addressed, if we decide to move forward on, and having that discussion, I guess.
Yeah, and I would just emphasize the whole idea of trade-offs. I mean, you're always, you're not going to have a perfect answer. And right now, we've been hearing a lot about these scrapes and replacements with the big McMansions, and clearly, we've heard that a preference would be to subdivide lots and allow smaller houses. So we're hearing that from people that are living in these lots. So from what I've heard, they're willing to make the trade-off.
That's true, and we had asked this question in a survey about a year ago, too, and went back to refresh on some of the responses, and what Mary just said is correct in terms of what we heard in the survey, too, in terms of a fair amount of favorability about looking at subdividing lots as one of the potential solutions. We saw less favorability about limiting house sizes, but that varied by location a bit. So North Boulder, there was more favorability about limiting sizes, and other parts of the community, less so. So there's some interesting results there, too, that might be helpful to your discussion.
Is that something, that survey, maybe could you circulate, those are good things for us to look on before the retreat?
That would be great.
Is that a comp plan result?
That was from the survey a year ago for the comprehensive plan.
Are those results in the comp plan that we got?
No, they're on the comprehensive plan website, but I can send you links to them. And then if there are particular topics you'd like to drill into a bit more, we can certainly provide those to you as well.
Things that are relevant to these things.
I just have one more comment about neighborhood character changing. The people who are complaining to us about the scrapes are often people who have lived there for a long time, and the neighborhood character is changing around them, right? And so the trade-off of being able to lot subdivision and get two small houses versus one big house, you know, every lot on your street, I think that's the trade-off we have to look at, because the character's changing one way or the other. And which way do you want that change to go, is the question.
Okay, other things that people feel like we need to put up or that we haven't already on this land use, housing stuff?
I'll just mention, Zan, thanks for raising the question about the housing in the commercial areas. So just, I understand what you're saying about later on in the process. I just want to emphasize, I'd like to make sure it's on that. It stays on the list. You know, maybe we're not getting to it this year, but that it doesn't fade off into 2025 or something.
Well, and I guess that is a little bit of a question about the retreat. Normally, I mean, the stuff in gray on this, we had, I mean, this is 2018, 2019, and there's stuff in gray that maybe we'll get to in the second year. And I think at the retreat, we may want to loosely prioritize what we hope we can get to the next year, as we know we can't do it all this year. So anyhow. It's something to think about.
So I just wanted to say something about the large lot subdivisions and maybe putting it off till later. I think we need to do something soon, and, you know, and I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, and I totally agree. And it's just, I mean, I could just take you anywhere in North Boulder, and every house systematically is just getting scraped, and giant houses are appearing. So something needs to happen, like ASAP.
Okay, to that end, that to me is a question to staff, is if we are feeling some urgency around this, what could that look like? So you don't have to answer that now, but I guess at the retreat, to me, some options for, if we said, you know what, this is feeling like a priority for 2018, can you give us some small, medium, larger, whatever it is, ideas on what we might do?
That'd be great.
And you could already send them out in advance or whatever, but I think that would be useful. Okay, anything else? I mean, we could actually try to get out of here by 10.
I think that's a great goal.
Okay.
We want to make your time at the retreat and beyond as useful to you, so I just want to extend an invitation. If there are things that you think of between now and the retreat that we can arrive prepared to discuss or bring with us, you've identified a few tonight, please feel free to let us know, because I want to make that time as useful for you as we possibly can.
So one thing that, and I appreciate that, Jim, and so one thing that isn't on this housing list, but I know we're working on it, Ponderosa is one of them, but the whole issue about mobile home parks, and I listed like five things, continued improvements to our mobile home ordinances, I think there's some tweaks, acquire or look at, update the current infrastructure, looking at possible annexations of some mobile home parks, possibly creating a mobile home authority, and the mobile home lot rent stabilization. And I don't know if that's already going on, or if that's a huge ask, or what that, how we could fit that in.
So some components of that are going on, but certainly not to the scale that you just described. That feels like a pretty big project. My sense is that what we would want to really do is understand what all those issues are and to prioritize them, and actually look at how we would accomplish some of the things that you just laid out there.
Yeah, I mean, that would be, that would be good.
Yep.
Okay. And I think of it as taking the next steps. Like, I feel like mobile home work is an ongoing process, and we've been making progress, and we just want to keep moving forward. So maybe what is the next step or two over the next couple of years? And depending on what happens in the 2018 midterms, it might enable some things to happen at the state legislature, say, in 2019. So anyhow.
I also think that we learn things from the Mapleton Mobile Home Park, we learned things from Red Oak Park, we're going to learn more things from Ponderosa, and hopefully each time we do it, we'll do a little bit better job. And so I think we'll be able to use those learnings towards some of the things that you're looking for.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, good enough. Don't forget, we can continue to put stuff out on Hotline before the retreat, so let's, okay. So with that, maybe we should move to our next. Thank you very much, you guys.
Your next item is a discussion of the Elections Working Group.
So thank you so much for giving me a little bit of time on this agenda. You have a yellow sheet, which is the information that I sent out on Hotline a couple of days ago. So since we talked on December 19th, I put together kind of a draft charter for the working group, and I wanted you all to take a quick look at it, to make sure that this is moving in the right direction. My plan, if it is, would be to announce on Monday that we're seeking members to fill the group, give people about two weeks to apply. And then the other smallish, I hope, request that I have is, I'd like to be able to go through all of the applications on the weekend of the 19th, even though I know I'll also be busy elsewhere, and report to you my recommendations for those that would be on the working group on January 23rd. Now, that's the day you're doing the Housing Board, but my hope is... Now, that's the day you're doing the Housing Board, but my hope is that that would take maybe 15 minutes. So among the things that I would like you to take a look at here would be, have I described what we're asking for accurately? Are the representatives that are the types of people that I've listed in paragraph two correct? Importantly, how many members should be on the committee? I'll tell you that my first draft of this started out with sort of requesting 15 with, at the max, but with no more than 12. And in conversations with others, it has seemed to me that more will get done the fewer people we have. So I reduced it to no more than 12 members, but with a preference for nine. I'm very open to whatever number you think it should be. If you think it should be seven, that's fine, or 20, I hope not, but there you go. And then I have some timelines for people to report back. So we want to get going with this right away. And among the things that will be important is that if people are wanting to pass petitions for initiative or referenda, we will need them to get going in the late April timeframe. And so we're hopeful that we can report back to the council on those items by March 15th. Then charter amendments by April 15th, other campaign finance by the time you go on break on June 19th, and then the summer for just miscellaneous election items that would not require code changes. So those are my questions, and just like your input and guidance.
Okay, start with question one.
Looking at the paragraph one, do you believe that it is accurate to say that persons with strongly-held opinions will be welcome to apply, and that the goal of the working group is to study, consider, and recommend campaign finance regulations that may be permitted by the United States Constitution and Colorado Constitution, as well as other election procedures and requirements? Is that what you're looking for?
I don't know if opinions is, but maybe, you know, experience, or people who've been very involved in elections before, and, you know, you could have somebody who has a strong opinion but has no experience and no knowledge of what they're talking about.
I think the point is, don't shy away from somebody just because they have strong opinions. But absolutely, they need to be informed opinions with the greater good in mind.
They need to be able to work in a group, too.
I was trying to capture the statement made that don't shy away from strongly-held opinions. And that's why I put that in there. But let me see if I can work on that.
Totally appreciate it.
Well, I just meant, sometimes we put together groups, and being able to collaborate is like so important. And I think on this, we're like, it's, I think in the end, we're going to make the decision.
Yes.
So collaboration is perhaps, and getting to consensus maybe not as big of a deal here. I think that's what that meant.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yes.
Okay, next question?
This aside.
The next question is actually number two, who I have down there is a representative or more of the legal wingman voters, persons who may have participated in the 1999 citizen-initiated campaign reform for the Boulder Charter, someone from Colorado Ethics Watch or a similar organization, someone who or more who may have served on a candidate or ballot measure committee, and residents with demonstrated interest in election matters. Is that, did I get everyone?
I think so.
Okay. Then the next one is how many on the committee?
An odd number, less than 12.
Thank you.
Yeah. I think that's fine.
Well, and I would see who applies.
Okay.
And, you know, if there's really just nine people, that's fine. And if there's really three extra that are really good, or you think could contribute, I would just kind of leave it until we get the applications and...
Okay, but you're fine with the nine, 12 kind of range?
Yep.
Okay, that's great. I think the other question, I guess, is on number 10, where I have when we want people to report back, or when we want the committee to report back. I tried to create a hierarchy of the most important things first, or that needed...
I think it's a very well-considered schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and obviously, hey, if they want to get it all done by March, fine.
Best of luck doing so.
So Jane, I guess in the announcement for folks to apply, they'll need to have some idea of how long they'll need to serve, so...
Right. So the way that this has been fashioned, their final report is due August 31st, but it can be sooner. So I feel like it really is going to take them a little bit of time to get the work done. So they could end it by June 19th, when you guys go on break. If they don't really want to address the social media issues or technology issues, they could decide, we don't really want to do that, and maybe council can think about that another year, whatever. So I would leave that to their discretion. So I think it's going to be appointments at the end of January through either June or August, depending on the group.
And does it say how often they meet?
We haven't decided that. I would leave that to the group's first meeting to figure that out. And the facilitator will be David Gier. He will be supported by Tammy Burnett from my office, who will keep things on track.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Looks good.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for pulling that other so quickly.
Okay. Your next item is a discussion of potential climate change litigation.
Good evening. The council agenda committee asked staff to explore the possibility of cooperating with some foundations and some outside lawyers on potential litigation against some fossil fuel companies modeled after some litigation that's currently going on in California, and after the successful cigarette industry litigation. Jonathan Cohen is here to talk about the prospect in more detail.
Thanks, Tom. I think you said everything that needs to be said.
Want to turn on your mic?
Yeah, I will do that. Thanks. Mayor, Council, Jonathan Cohen, I'm the Regional Sustainability Coordinator. Given the hour, I'm going to try to keep my comments relatively brief. I do want to start with just a little bit of context setting. I think it's important in the conversation today. So I think council is aware that Boulder, our climate commitment has been a priority for many, many years. Early on, our focus was really on delivery of programs that were mostly voluntary services that evolved into kind of some policy efforts, and really started to look at regional approaches. As we continue to build our understanding of effective strategies, there was this recognition that we really needed to address the supply side of our energy. That led us down the path to municipalization. And then I think we started to really raise our literacy, and the recent wildfires and flood events also led us to incorporate resilience in our overall climate strategy as a key element, resulting in the hiring of a chief resilience officer and the development of a resilient strategy. Finally, we've recognized the importance of coalitions. The city is part of numerous climate-based groups at the regional, state, federal, and international levels. One of those, of course, is the Colorado Communities for Climate Action, which is focused on policy reform at the state level. And in fact, the city is currently involved in climate litigation as we are part of the legal actions associated with the repeal of the Clean Power Plan. So as there is a growing recognition that local jurisdictions are truly on the front lines when it comes to a changing climate, we need to realize we have to find more effective tools. And unfortunately, a critical and often overlooked part of the climate debate relates to accountability, meaning who should bear the cost of adapting to our climate future? Should it be the communities like Boulder and local governments, whose contributions to climate change are typically marginal? Or should it be the handful of large companies that produced, sold, and profited from fossil fuels, and in many cases, knew the consequences of their use? So tonight, what we're looking for is council's feedback on the potential, as Tom said, for the city to join in a common law legal case against yet-to-be-determined large fossil fuel producers that have had a substantial presence in Colorado and are known as significant emitters of greenhouse gases. So I should clarify that this is not a staff-driven or initiated effort. The city was approached about a year ago by a DC-based law firm who is working collectively with Colorado-based attorneys. Collectively, they have been researching potential lawsuits in this area against major fossil fuel producers and emitters in multiple states. So I'm not going to cover the entire framework of the lawsuit, but is contemplated what's proposed as a lawsuit, again, against large fossil fuel emitters for their total contributions to dangerous concentrations of atmospheric greenhouse gases and climate change. The lawsuit will be based on Colorado's state common law theories of liability such as negligence and nuisance, and would seek compensation in the form of monetary damages and for the present and reasonably certain future expenses that local governments like Boulder will have to make in light of a changing climate. And it's intended to be filed in Colorado State Court, not federal court, and Tom may have some comments about that. The basis for the case is that local governments are expending money to manage climate harms as a consequence of certain companies' actions. A vital objective of the action is to raise awareness of the issue, as I said, of accountability when it comes to climate issues, but also to challenge the conventional notion that consumers are the only responsible entities. And there are a number of reasons why local governments, like Colorado cities and counties, are truly in the best position to litigate climate accountability. A lawsuit based on climate adaptation costs may be the most winnable case, because local governments are often the only entities that are making these big expenditures. Our starting place for thinking about this lawsuit has been the Carbon Majors Report. I think there was a link in your packet. That's a recent peer-reviewed study, which has looked at fossil fuel production statistics since the Industrial Revolution, and traced 2/3 of harmful emissions to roughly 90 entities globally. So several of those entities are identified in the report as US companies, and many have a major presence in Colorado, producing, refining, marketing, and selling fossil fuels in the state. I should also say that there are other Colorado jurisdictions that are considering a similar action at the same time as we are. Because specific climate-related impacts are quite similar in our region, it actually makes some sense for the city to collaborate if these entities do choose to pick up this type of litigation. It also provides an opportunity for resource sharing, which brings me to an important point. At this stage, the legal firm is working on this litigation on a pro bono basis. They are not pursuing this litigation to make money or generate fees. That said, there is the potential for real expenses to the city from this effort. Tom can talk about any of the legal risks associated with this litigation, but I want to be clear that this effort has the potential of being resource-intensive, certainly from a staff level, and there'll be some unavoidable staff time required, which will vary, I think, depending on the posture of the case. In the near term, it's our understanding that very little will be required of city staff. The most significant staff time will not come for potentially years after the case survives preliminary motions and is into discovery. But I think there is some front-loading of some work that needs to be done in the pre-litigation stage, primarily from city staff related to identifying the impacts and associated costs that would really become the backbone of any claim. This may be several days to several weeks of commitment. One of the great things that we have access to is the Climate Accountability Institute in Snowmass, who has done a lot of this type of work with cities that I'll talk about here in just a minute. Also, I have to acknowledge that City Attorney's Office will need to review any complaint before it's filed, but the firm commits to drafting the complaint and performing any necessary legal research. After a case is filed, the primary staff burden would be in connection with responding to discovery. This may be somewhat substantial, but if we get to discovery, this case will have exceeded in some sense in establishing the principle that companies are potentially liable for climate harms. Also, the City Attorney's Office will certainly need to review major pleadings and motions, and we would expect there would be a major communications effort associated with this effort, too. So based on council's direction, we may need to prioritize some of our existing efforts to make room and make sure that we have adequate staff resources to pick this up. If this is the direction the council wishes to go. One question I just want to touch on briefly is whether this type of action would be the first of its kind. Interestingly, if climate litigation is construed broadly, the past 20 years have seen 654 cases tried in the US. Most recently, two California counties, as Tom alluded to, and a city sued 37 fossil fuel companies seeking funds to cover the cost of dealing with a changing climate. In Oregon, a federal lawsuit was brought by, on behalf of young people, essentially claiming that its failure to sufficiently cut emissions violates their constitutional right to life, liberty, and property, and that's actually moving towards a February trial date. The California cases that were referenced in your packet tonight, again, resemble the state tobacco lawsuits of the 1990s, as Tom mentioned, which argued that the industry knew and concealed the dangers of smoking, leaving the states with enormous health care bills. In the new suits that were referenced, Marin and San Mateo Counties and the city of Imperial Beach are accusing the oil companies in the state of California of knowing that the industry would cause catastrophic climate change, and they covered up the evidence. So the point is that climate litigation is becoming a bit of a mass movement, and the increasingly obvious impacts of climate change are going to make these cases harder to brush aside. And the pressure of litigation, I think one of the topics that we've talked about with some of the legal firms and some of the partners, is that the pressure of litigation could also lead companies to alter their practices or work with lawmakers on a deal, as the tobacco companies did to resolve their litigation. So to conclude, tonight, we're asking for the council to provide direction on the potential litigation, which would allow the city to enter into a retainer with the outside counsel that we've discussed. This would allow us to work with an external team to build the case, identifying the impacts, and essentially putting together a claim. We expect the final approval for submittal would come after, of course, the city has had the opportunity to evaluate the complaint, that we've done the necessary impact assessment, and that's a process that could take some time. In sum, it seems that litigating to reform energy policy is challenging and perhaps inefficient, but it may be entirely necessary. With the whiplash that I think we've experienced at the federal level on climate policies, it's patently clear we need more concrete policy action at the local level, including addressing the root causes and helping communities adapt to the consequences. With that, I'd like to turn it back over to the mayor, unless there are additional comments that, Tom, you'd like to make now, or maybe we can save those for questions.
I would just like to add, I'm one of the, I have talked to the attorneys, and I, and brought this forward to staff as something that I think was worth exploring, and I, one thing that we should take this next step. And I'll just note that the county is also similarly moving forward. And I think this is just a sort of cutting-edge, multi-pronged approach to the climate that we should be engaging in. And it's to have, to be able to be a part of, I mean, we are facing real costs from climate, and to have willing attorneys who want to help us do this pro bono is something too good, I think, to pass up. So anyhow, I think we could talk as long about this as we want, or as little as we need, depending on how people feel. So with that, you had raised your hand, but...
I just had a really quick question. So first of all, for lack of better words, this is totally cool. I just had a quick question in terms of, you said that other things on our agenda may have to be foregone. Can you give us an example of what those might be?
Not yet. And I think the reason for that is we don't know exactly how much staff time and resource will be necessary. I think we've been assured by the firm that we've discussed this issue with, is that they really want to do the heavy lifting on this. That said, there is a fair amount of analysis that needs to be done in terms of actual costs that have been borne, and are those costs truly different, and are they caused by anthropogenic emissions versus typical government services? So are they above and beyond what we would have normally done? We want to get that right. So I think our thought was, are there things in our work plan within the climate commitment that staff is currently focused on that might have to be pushed aside to make sure that we do this correctly? And I don't know what that would look like yet.
And I would say not necessarily foregone, but delayed. When you're in litigation, you have to do what's in front of you now, so that bumps whatever else you're doing.
So I guess where I'm really getting with this is, I mean, it's not going to affect anything with our work on the muni, is it?
It could, because some of the same lawyers would be involved.
Okay.
I mean, I'm hoping that the PUC work has sort of dropped off, and Deb Kalish would take the laboring law on this. She's been our lead PUC lawyer. I was also hoping she would take the laboring law on broadband, or on broadband. So that, this may push broadband down, and if the PUC heats up at the same time, someone else would have to step into one of those two roles.
Okay, cool. All right, thanks.
So that focus, Tom, is on the legal commitment. What about the commitment in the sustainability department? How much, any concept of how much time this would take?
In early conversation... In, in early conversations with the group in terms of pulling together the data that they believe is necessary, they estimated it would take, in the number of days, to potentially a week of staff time to do that. Now, that's based on a very loose estimate. We don't know how much data we need to mine, and how much of the lifting could be done by, say, the Climate Accountability Institute, that really starts to filter some of that information and be able to differentiate between those costs that should be borne by the city and those that we wouldn't have borne, been borne otherwise.
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess my position on this is, you know, I just got back from the COP23 gathering, and there were many events which focused on coordinated city actions that put pressure on the polluters to stop. And so, I think, if we're talking about a few weeks of time of staff time, I think this is almost a no-brainer, in the sense that this is like, a huge, diffuse, wicked problem that everybody's going to have to work to solve. And if we can get people who have profited from fossil fuel extraction to pay us back for some of the costs that we're bearing from those impacts, I don't know why we would pass it up. If it were going to take a whole bunch of legal staff time because it was our suit, and we're going to have to pay outside attorneys to do it, that would be something else, again. But if we have pro bono attorneys who are coordinating other cities in Colorado to do this, I say full speed ahead.
So, Sam, can I just correct a couple of little things there? I agree with 90% of what you just said.
Mm-hmm.
It's more than a couple of weeks, if you're in discovery, if we get to discovery. And so, let me just make it clear, we're nowhere near discovery. As Jonathan sort of hinted, the cases in California are tied up in motions and litigation, and they're not going to get to discovery anytime soon. So, we're not talking about pulling Jonathan out of doing what he's doing right now for some time. But when we do get to discovery, someone will do that full-time, and it will, it'll be intense. And so, you can't, it's, it's more than a couple of weeks if we get to that level. Not clear we'll get to that level, and we could probably come back and talk to you. On the legal side, the fact that someone else is doing it, our name's still on the pleadings. So, we read everything, we review everything. It still does take time. We don't write it, and we have talented people doing it. Usually, it doesn't require much, but you still do have to take the time to, to read and make sure that it's all right, because our name's on it.
Good. Thanks.
Yeah, Marin and Aaron.
So, I would support this, and one of the things that we haven't talked about is the whole resilience effort that the city is undertaking. I was just looking at the report, progress report that we have at the dais this evening. And in there, there's, one of the bullet points is to invest in the future. And I'll read just a little excerpt from it that I think really resonates with this piece, this, this project, which is, "With the relatively recent emergence of resilience as a public policy priority, there is, there is a new opportunity for cities to channel investments in ways that achieve multiple benefits: reduce risk to lives and property, encourage a thriving and just economy, and allow resilience value to grow over the lifetime of an initiative." So, I, I think this kind of fits within that, that kind of investing in the future and, and making investments for, you know, things that are going to be coming at us, and we may not be here ourselves. So, I support it.
Okay. Aaron?
Yeah, I support this as well. I mean, the, the action has to be taken at the city level these days. I mean, the latest from the Trump administration was announcing that huge areas are being open to offshore drilling, so the problems are only getting worse. So, we have to, we have to do what we can. I would encourage us to work as closely as possible with our coalition partners, with the Colorado Communities for Climate Action. The more cities and counties that are involved, that amplifies the potential, but also potential to diffuse some of the work. And I know we'd still have to do a lot of our own analysis of our own numbers here in Boulder, but if we can collaborate with other cities and counties to come up with methodologies for how to create that data, or to share the legal work, then that could minimize the impact on our resources as well.
I'm fine with going forward, and I think it's a no-brainer, and I think it's really important, and it's, I'm fine, so thank you for your report.
And I would just like to make a small tweak to something Sam said, which is that this is working on solving it. We're not going to solve this issue, but we can maybe manage it better.
Right.
Unfortunately, it looks like we're too far down that road.
That's right.
Okay, I think we've heard from everybody. Do you need a motion?
No. I think so.
Okay. So, your direction is clear?
Yep. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you for that, you know.
Next is your call-up.
Okay, call-up.
So, should I make a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, I would like to move to call up the site review to develop the three properties at 2180 Violet Avenue, 2100 Violet Avenue, and 2145 Upland Avenue. Proposal, and I'm not, do I need to?
No.
Okay, so, I'm going to stop it there.
We have a second. Second. Okay. I think we need to open this for a public hearing.
Yes.
Would anybody like to speak to this? Okay, I'm closing the public hearing. We sort of discussed this earlier. I think we've kind of said what needs to be said. We want to make sure not to harm the Habitat for Humanity project. We have some concerns with what happens on the other parcels, and that this will be part of the annexation amendment issue that somehow we'll deal with these, try to schedule these in a synergistic way. Is that good?
Yep.
Okay, all those in favor? It is unanimous. Does anybody have any debrief of this meeting in terms of process?
I do.
Yep.
It was fantastic. I came into this meeting with all the subjects we had, expecting it to run much later, and so I thought we all did a good job. Now, we are two members down, which helps with that, but congratulations, everyone. That was quick.
Well, and, and we, we dealt with some significant issues that came up from open comment as well. So, yeah, and now we get 10 before 10.
All right. Anything else? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.